That's so effective. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. At this time, I'd like to call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on May 2nd, 2019, beginning at 7:03 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. As is our custom, we will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Hibbs in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And if I can ask that, do you silence cellphones and any electronic devices that you have to avoid disruptions to those around you? And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. As you may guess, we have a performance about to happen. The first item on our agenda is program and presentation. We have a performance by the All-City Junior High Choir. Ms. Foster?
Yes, and a sea of great singers in front of me tonight. Welcome, everyone. Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. We do have a very special treat for you tonight, and I truly think you're going to be absolutely blown away by the talent of the Young Junior High Concert Mixed Choir. They're a combination of the Varsity Boys and Varsity Girls Choirs. They meet separately during the school day. When they're not in class, they get together and they prepare for the holiday tour, the UIL contest, and other special performances. And this year, they were the only junior high mixed choir in the country to be invited to sing at the American Choral Directors Association National Convention in Kansas City, Missouri. It's a pretty high honor. And they were actually the first junior high choir program in Arlington to ever receive that honor. Yes, that's worthy of applause. The directors of the program are Kristy Jones, who actually went to Arlington School. She's been teaching here for 19 years. And then Keith Daniel is here as well. Oh, on your birthday, I even understand. Happy birthday! I'm not going to tell him what I just heard you say. He's been here for 12 years, and together, these two have been teaching for 10 years together at Young. The piece they're singing tonight was written by Mrs. Jones as a closer for their ACDA program, and it's called "Mimi Nuru." I got it right, y'all, right? Okay, Mimi Nuru. You say it twice, three times. It's swahili for "I am the light," and it's based on the text from John 8:12. So take it away, Young Junior High.[240.81][243.12](applause)
(singing) Basie esu, ana wapiya, te la te ma, akasema. Mimi ni nuru, mimi ni nuru, ya ulenweku. Mimi ni nuru, mimi ni nuru, ya ulenweku. Ye ye, ami fataye, tata kwen da kisa nikame. Ye ye, ami fataye, tata kwen da kisa nikame. Tadi atakuwa, na nuru ya uzima, nuru ya uzima. Mimi ni nuru, mimi ni nuru, ya ulenweku. Mimi ni nuru, mimi ni nuru, ya ulenweku. Mimi ni nuru, nuru, ya ulenweku.
Absolutely fantastic. Thank you, guys. This was our pleasure to hear you a second time before the night you, the other time when you were about to head to Kansas City. What an experience for you, what an experience for us. Thank you so very much. Amazing talent. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Happy birthday to the choir director. What a good birthday celebration. And to those in the audience, just to remind you, that was junior high. Think about that. They sounded like high school, didn't they? It's just fantastic. Thank you very, very much. I always say after these, can we just call this meeting adjourned now and move on? Because how do you top that? On that note, though, we do have some other recognitions under program and presentation. The second is our Student of the Month for the month of May, which is a student from Venture High School. So I'd like to call Principal Meeks up to the podium so that you can share us, share with us information about your student.
President Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. It's an honor, I have a special honor of announcing two kids every year. And today, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our Venture student. Venture is an alternative campus where kids can work at their own pace, work faster, get the support they need. And a lot of it's on technology now, blended learning. So Marcus is, Marcus Harris Jr. is going to be our student tonight, and Marcus is a prime example of what Venture can do for students in AISD. Marcus is from Bowie High School, and his journey has been his journey. I'll tell the kids, everyone has a story, and so we have to figure out what that story is and how we go forward. And Marcus is in the band. He was a pretty good band member at Bowie, and he wanted to stay in the band, so we made a way for him to go to Bowie, be in the band. And I remember a story. Marcus came up to me, and he's like, you know, I need, I gotta make sure I'm eligible. Need to be eligible for UIL. And it's okay, well, I'm sure you are, Marcus. So anyway, he's very responsible, very respectful, and just very honest. But when he came to us, he was behind a little bit. And so Marcus has worked very hard. This is his graduation year, and Marcus has excelled beyond that. One last thing, Marcus joined our band at Venture. We have a new creative choir music class. You know, I can't tell you all the details. But anyway, Marcus joined that, and they perform, and they play the, you know, real instruments and perform for our school and other events. So if I could, I would like to present to you Marcus Harris.
Congratulations, Marcus. Thank you for being here. It's quite an honor for you to be standing here. Are there any words you'd like to share? Anybody you'd like to introduce?
I just want to give thanks to my family for all the love and support they've shown me. I wouldn't be here without them. Pretty much, me growing up as a student in high school, I always wanted, you know, put bad first or not do my work, skip class, everything, pretty much a bad student would do. So when my, when my parents applied for me to go to Venture, of course, I was pretty mad. I didn't want to leave Bowie. I wanted to stay with my friends, and I wanted to, you know, like graduate with them, whatever do like that. So the first days, I was pretty mad. Every day, I wouldn't do work, I wouldn't turn assignments, I wouldn't even log on to the computer. But when I talked to Mr. Meeks, we had a conversation, and he was pretty much saying the amount of effort you can put in just by not doing your work, you can put that same effort into getting credits, graduate early. So it, I started thinking about it overnight and everything like that, and I started getting credits, getting, like, I applied for a scholarship the other day, and I'm happily, I'm happily to get that one. I came to Venture with 12, 13 credits as my senior year. Now I have 19.5, finna graduate in within two weeks. So that's something I'm very glad that's gonna happen. Also, wanted to thank the people, faculty, students, and teachers that helped me through all the rough times that I had in my life and all the stuff that they've given me. But most of all, I want to thank all the friends and everything I have that are driven like me. They're hungry to get credits, and they're hungry to graduate as so as I am. So I just want to thank all of you for everything you've done to me, and good night.
Thank you. I know, please stay, Marcus. Come on back, Marcus. You're not off the hook that easy. Especially with such, such an amazing testimony. You, you, as we all are presented with choices in life, and you made a choice that is going to positively change your trajectory into the future. And who knows how many lives beyond your own that you're going to impact in a positive fashion? So we're all proud of you for making that choice and for doing that, and for standing up here and spreading that to those, those that are maybe in similar situations, being faced with that same type of a choice. So we, we're so proud of you for stepping up and being that example and leading by example there. And so hats off to you again. If, if, just for a few moments longer, Dr. Cavassos and I would like to come down and present you with something.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, yeah, this is working. Why don't you stand right over here in between us? And I would assume that your family are probably the paparazzi over there with the cellphone. Is that right? Is that Mom and Dad? Hello, Mom and Dad. Congratulations. Thank you for your supporting him. So, so as trustees, we have a special pin that we wear, our superintendent wears, and most, if not all trustees are wearing them. And we bestow these upon individuals that are making a significant impact, that are in alignment with what we are trying to do with the entire Arlington community and Arlington School District. I would like to present to you with that pin, so that you can wear that, use it however you wish, but just know that it's a token of our gratitude for you excelling and being an example for other students in our district. You're welcome.
So Marcus, we have this plaque for you too, and just thank you for demonstrating persistence and perseverance. You're an example for our students, you're an example for the students at Venture. And I'm so proud of you, and I know you can do exceptionally well in your future. You're already doing well, so thank you on behalf of our school district. Congratulations.
We're gonna take some pictures. We'll look this way for Spence. Dad, if you want to come on over and get a close-up picture, that's, that's great. Come on over. Is that good, Spence?
Yep.
All right, we have to listen to him. He's the boss.
We'll get him here.
One, two. One, two. How about for Dad here? Very good. Congratulations, Dad. All right. Next on our agenda is to recognize some students with regards to the winners of the annual Animal Essay Contest.
That's right. We have a lot of red shirts in the house. I'm sure you can see. These are students that are going to be introduced, and you're going to learn more about this program by our city council member, Sherri K. Part.
Hello, Ms. K. Part. Thank you so much for being here.
Well, it's my honor. I did not know I was here on such an auspicious night for Mr. Hibbs, but I'm, I'm late to the party, but I'm here, Mr. Hibbs. Thank you, Dr. Reich, and thank you, Dr. Marcel Cavassos and trustees. Many of you are very aware of this Animal Essay Contest. This is our 18th year, and over those 18 years, we have had over 16,500 entries of students writing essays from their heart. Many of those students are out of AISD, so I am honored to continue this theme of winners, just like we've just heard from the previous student, Student of the Month. And I have six of those from AISD. Five of them are here with us tonight, along with principals and teachers. I'm going to ask them to come up and stand behind me so we can recognize you while I also tell a little bit more about what they had to accomplish. First is Sam Shar from Marymore Elementary, teacher Nanette Commerford, and principal Nathan Pratt. And Sam was the first-place winner for 4th grade. Next, I asked Carson Cozad from Duff Elementary and teacher Diana Andro. And Carson was the third-place winner for 5th grade. And then, and then Andrea Valerela from Marymore, teacher Kim Schill, principal Nathan Pratt. And then 6th grade, Wood Elementary, SWEPT. So we have third-place winner Summer Barker. We have second-place winner Andrew Smith. I think Andrew is not here with us this evening. And we have first-place winner Tessa Goodyear, and their common teacher is Cindy Rohan, and their principal, David Dillon. So each of these students spent a great deal of thought in their essays. Each of these students, we kept very busy once we announced they were winners. So we're kind of like, you know, the surprise wagon folks who go into the school, and we do share it with the principal and the teacher and the parent, but then they keep it secret. Did all of your parents keep it secret from you? Yes. Come on, stand around me. There you go. Face the board. There you go. Come on. And so, and so we do that, and then each of these students, we have sponsorships every year. This year, it was Spring Creek BBQ and ECU Credit Union. Each of these students receives a $100 savings account. So we take them down to the credit union, and they actually go through the process of opening their own savings accounts. So that's another learning experience for them. Many of them are very, very unaware about, I give you $100, now you take it up and hand it to the teller. It's like, I thought it was mine. Well, it is. But you're gonna put it in the bag. We also, each of them get a Kindle Fire. We give them training over at our library next to our Animal Services Center. We give them a behind-the-scenes tour of the Animal Services Center, including the veterinarian clinic. And then the first-place winners also, we bring in with their teacher, and we do a video interview of them, and then that continues to be rebroadcast. So this is, this has multiple prongs to it. They, just that they write. It's also that we try to expose them to a number of things. We clearly have a reception for them at City Hall every year, where they meet the mayor and the council members. And then on the first-place winners, what we've done in the past, when we got six years out in the contest, we went back to those first 6th grade winners, okay? And we asked them to come back, and we did an interview. So we've done that successfully every year. And I'm surprised at how many of the, because they're now seniors in high school, right? You wouldn't think they would even remember, but they do. The stories that have come from those 6th grade winners who are now 12th graders are phenomenal. Each of them, to date, that has actually come back is going on to college. That's phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. Many of them has used that Animal Essay Contest as an entry to college. If you won any awards, Animal Essay Contest goes up. So you just don't know, but we started it because we wanted to bring awareness to what it meant to be a responsible pet owner. And as many of us know, people who grow up to be abusers almost always start by abusing animals. So the idea of 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th grade was to get in front of these children early on with appropriate essay titles to get them thinking about what it means to be responsible for another living creature. What can you do to improve that life? What can you do as a human being to help? And so some of the essays that have come forward have been heartbreaking. Most of them have been uplifting. But these children, these young children, they speak from the heart, and it's always uplifting. So once again, I present to you the AISD Animal Essay winners for 2019. So congratulations. If possible, I'd like to get a picture. Spence has agreed to take a picture wherever Spence has gone to.
While we're waiting for, while we're waiting for Spence to come take your picture. Dr. Reich, I have had the opportunity to work with Councilwoman K. Part for many years, reading these essays, and, and they are phenomenal. What you all, each one of you have done is amazing. I mean, absolutely amazing essays. My wife can tell you that I would read those, and I, you know, it was like, wow. And then I would have to go, wow. And then I have to go, wow. And then have to try to judge which ones are the best, and you know, they're, you guys were chosen out of hundreds of essays, hundreds of essays, which is amazing. That, that means that you guys are pretty special. You stand out. But allergies are really bad this week. I want to let you know that-
They're horrible today, Mr. Hibbs.
And they're probably contagious, right?
Absolutely. Councilwoman K. Part has been an amazing council member for our city. Her love and her passion, especially for ensuring that, you know, our animal shelter survives and flourishes, and that, you know, our city is a compassionate, loving city, stems from the root of her heart.
So you, Ms. K. Part? Thank you.
Mr. Hibbs, you have been an incredible human being for all the years that you and I've had our ups and our downs, and we've commiserated together, we've celebrated together, but always. You've been constant, you've been steadfast, you're trustworthy, and you're honest, you're a man's gentleman, so thank you. And I also want to extend thank you to one of your new board members, Ms. Fowler, who for the first time this year was a judge. John had kind of passed the baton, and I appreciated her input. We do this judging with having a school board member from AISD, MISD, and then a guest judge and myself. So we try to make it very uniform and very objective, and I think we do a really good job. But again, AISD, just in sheer numbers, has more entries than any of the other school districts, and to that, you should be very proud. But this doesn't happen without the support of the parents, and in many cases, the teachers and the principals. So it's just another learning experience that we, the city, can share to help you, help all of us by providing this opportunity to these kids, and they're marvelous. They're all winners. And but thank you for your support. I very much appreciate it.
Ms. K. Part?
Thank you, John.
I just have to say, first off, he got you, didn't he? He turned the tables on you. You thought you were coming here to give recognition, and he took your recognition.
This is not, this is about the kids, and John, it's not about-
That's right. No, I, I want to say on behalf of the board, thank you for planting the seeds, having the vision and the passion and the care. Each one of you, you got some really cool stuff out of it, but you got a great experience out of it, and it will be something that has, will continue to leave an indelible mark on you moving forward. And hopefully, and I think it is, having an indelible mark on our community for our little fur babies that we like. And I'll have to say, before we come down to take a group photo, I just have to say, John, when you were saying wow, and then wow, and then wow, we were waiting to hear when it was going to be bow-wow for the animals. Have to give Dr. Cavassos credit for that one. So on that note, Spence, you are here. Would you like us all to come down and group together? Okay, guys, let's come on in.
If I could, Dr. Reich, can I ask the principals and teachers to come?
Absolutely. Everybody that's involved, yes.
To also join in on the photo. Okay, guys, one more picture. Are we, are we where we need to be, Spence? We need our school board trustees. I can stand in the back.
Congratulations. Congrats. I'm just gonna do this because I needed everybody else to be consistent, correct? Congratulations.
That's just thinking that in between.
Y'all ready?
Yeah.
I'm here. About one. Kids, no, it's over.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You're the winner. Congratulations, you guys.
I think we're gonna skip.
Running a job, sir. And before you kids leave, I don't know if you realize this, or- And before you kids leave, I don't know if you realize this or not, but a very special guest walked into the room while Ms. Kay Part was bragging on each of you. And that is our mayor of Arlington, Mr. Jeff Williams. He's in the back.
And if I may have just one moment of personal privilege as well, one of the parents would like to address the board with regard to this contest, if that is all right.
Okay, absolutely.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Lana Shar. I'm the mother of Sam Shar, first-place winner from Marymore Elementary. Hey. We're very proud. We're very proud and I'm sure every parent is, you know, for all of the parents of the winners. I want to talk about when, you know, how this all started, the story of, you know, that one day Sam came back home and just ran to the, our desktop and opened his Google Docs and started working. And I thought, oh my gosh, like, what is he doing? He usually doesn't, he's not that eager to work on his homework, right? And he goes like, no, mom, there's a contest and there's a Kindle fire involved in this. I gotta have that. And so he worked really hard for three, four days before due date. And so he submitted that and he told me, mom, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna win. And I was like, yes, buddy, you worked hard on this. I'm pretty sure you will. And sure enough, he did. I mean, I cannot start to experience how thankful we are for all the, all the events and the organization that Chris and city member Kay Part put in, you know, organizing and celebrating these kids. It brought so much joy to the parents' hearts and to the kids' hearts. And it just showed them their potential. And if they worked hard at something, they could achieve whatever they want. You know, I want to thank everybody that contributed in allowing this to happen. With the EECU, just having Sam go there and put money and sign papers and have that saving account ready for him. And we told him, this is your college fund and you have to go to college. It just showed them that I can think about my future and I can plan for it and I can, you know, have that plan in action right now, even at a young age. So it just, it just, it just brought a lot of joy. And just, I want to thank you for the recognition and for the opportunities that you showed these kids that they can have. So thank you very much. And thank you, Chris. Thank you very much, city council. Thank you, mayor, for having them because, again, it was just a blast, start to finish. And I cannot express how happy I am to be here today, how Sam, how happy Sam is to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Sam, I know your mom, as she said, she's pretty proud of you. You have a savings account now started for your future endeavors. And just remember that part of that future endeavor is taking care of your mom when you're able to. So that's why we all do it, so you guys can take care of us. Congratulations, really. What a great evening. So we are moving to the next portion, which is recognizing our outgoing trustee. And not just because he's got an amazing personality, he is outgoing all the time. Because his time has come. He's moving away from the board, but he'll always be with us. There's many of you that have come to support him that are around the fringes here. We do have some open seats. If you want to come funnel in, that would be great. And I do see that there's some reserved actually for Hibbs' family right over here. So please, come, come make yourselves comfortable as we begin this evening. We have a series of presentations, as well as for any trustees, any of my colleagues that have some words that they'd like to impart upon you, Mr. Hibbs. It's been, it's been an incredible, an incredible ride, an incredible nine years to serve with you. I'll reserve my remarks for the end. But I see, now that she's seated, I don't know, where are you, Ms. Sullins? There you are, in the back. So for those that don't know, Hibbs and Sullins, that's a team. That's a brother and sisterhood, right? Ms. Sullins tossed out the gauntlet when we said goodbye to her about, any of you that start any watershed, you're driving with my cats down to Austin. Well, Mr. Hibbs is already in watershed, so I don't know what we're gonna do tonight. Ms. Mays is. It's all the allergies. The allergies are just horrific, horrific this evening. That's what we'll say. So to kick off, what we'll do, we'll have one presentation, then have the opportunity for us to speak if you choose. And I'll see your names light up here. And then after we have said some remarks, if he's able to, I would love our mayor to come down as well and share some remarks. So before, or at the beginning of this, to kick this off, is Miles here from Representative Turner's office. If you could please come down, I know you have something to present on behalf of Representative Turner, who is fighting tirelessly for us right now down in Austin. So thank you for being here, Miles.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Hibbs, good evening. I am here on behalf of Representative Turner. He would definitely be here if he could, but he is down in Austin fighting for Arlington and the school district especially. So on his behalf, I have a resolution to present to you, as well as a flag that we had flown over the Capitol in your honor. So the resolution reads as follows. Whereas John Hibbs is retiring from the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees in 2019, and this occasion provides a fitting opportunity to reflect on his many achievements. And whereas Mr. Hibbs has represented place four on the Arlington School Board since 2010, and in the course of his nine-year tenure, he has gone on to serve as its secretary and vice president. He has also chaired the district's bond and athletic concessions committees, and he played an instrumental role in AISD's transition to an open-choice district and in the development of its strategic plan and its partnership with the University of Texas at Arlington. And whereas active in the wider community as well, Mr. Hibbs has held leadership positions with Arlington Children's Toy Charities and the Arlington Public Library Capital Campaign. And he has given generously of his time and talents to the YMCA, Theater Arlington, Upward Sports, and Lake Arlington Baptist Church, among other accolades. He has been named the Strong Man of the Year by Girls Inc. of Tarrant County and honored with a PTA Extended Life Membership Award. And whereas Mr. Hibbs is a graduate of Texas Christian University, as you can probably see from everyone here in their purple, where, and whereas through his unwavering commitment to Arlington schools, John Hibbs has helped foster a supportive and challenging educational environment. And his contributions will continue to benefit the district's students and staff for years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that the House of Representatives of the eighty-six Texas Legislature hereby commend John Hibbs for his service on the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees and extend to him sincere best wishes for the future. And be it further resolved that an official copy of this resolution be prepared for Mr. Hibbs as an expression of high regard by the Texas House of Representatives. And this is signed by Speaker of the House Dennis Bonin, as well as Representative Turner, as well, who both would like to recognize your service and commitment to the school children of Texas and especially Arlington. So thank you so much. We have a flag also that was flown for you and I'd like to present that to you as well. And this is a really great occasion. I've done one of these before for Ms. Sullins. I thought maybe they might change it up a little bit, might have you on the zip line at Camp Thurman. Might get all this stuff too at the end of it. But that would have been great. But we really hope you do continue your service to this city and this greater community as well. And I know probably a little under twenty-four hours now, you'll be settling in for a Rangers game or something like that as they play the Jays. But we hope that after you take a little bit of a break, you can continue your service to the city. So thank you so much.
John, photo op.
Also, I forgot to mention that I've also always appreciated the jacket, tie, and pocket square combos. And I forgot mine today. I feel bad about it. I couldn't find my purple pocket square. But I would have worn it if I did. But thank you again for everything you've done for the city.
Wonderful. Thank you, Miles. So in moving on, there was a picture slideshow that I put together that while we're talking, there we go, we can have it going on in the background. Trustee from May 2010 to 2019, we're gonna focus on that dash right now. So are there any, are there any trustees that have some words for Mr. Hibbs?
Really?
Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Raj. John, I just want to thank you for always being so kind and such a gentleman. Thank you for your leadership, your mentorship, but more importantly, thank you for your friendship. And I love you.
Up next is Ms. Walton. I do want to say, there you go, see the purple in the background? That was, it wasn't just being seen on most of these, but I want to let you know that purple is everywhere in this room tonight, in our hearts for you, John. Ms. Walton, please.
Thank you, President Raj. John, you are so special and such a dear, sweet man. When I first came to this board, you were so important to me. You know how important it is to mentor and bring along new leaders and help them not fall into holes. I tried real hard, but when I did, you were there to pick me up and I appreciate that. You are so many things that a leader has to be, a warrior in the battle whenever, whenever it was required with, well, we won't mention names. You were a wizard. You could always make the difficult just appear to be amazingly simple if we just thought about it. When the city asked you to just raise a few million dollars for the new downtown city library, it was no problem. You stepped right in and led the charge. You know what to focus on and what matters. You know what's relevant and what's just noise. And that has been a valuable thing for me to learn from you and I appreciate it so very much. You make the difficult look manageable and that is proof in many a school budget and several bond issues that attest to that, to that great skill. You're confident, you applaud others rather than seek recognition for yourself. All of these things I have learned from you and appreciate it so much. I'm a better leader because you invested your time and effort in me and helped me grow. I thank you, John Hibbs.
Thank you, President Raj. Hi, Jamie. Hi, Tony. I'm going to say.
Before you go on, formal recognition of former trustees, please stand. Mr. Tony Pompe and Ms. Jamie Sullins in back of the room.
Okay, so I'm going to just say a few words, because that's what you said, say a few words. And I do just want to say that any tears that you do see coming out of my eyes, it's not for me and what I feel for John, but it's about what he's done for this school district and for this community and for the children. And for that, my few words is confident, trustworthy, God-fearing, servant's heart. Gracias, mi amigo. Thank you, my friend. And as an Aggie, it is appropriate at this time for me to say, go Frogs.
I never thought I would hear those words. Fantastic. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Raj. It's appropriate that the picture just now that just passed was of my son ringing the bell on the Fourth of July float last year at the Arlington Parade. And when I was talking to Benjamin earlier about what we were doing tonight and I told him that this would be Mr. John's last meeting, he had some time ago figured that out and he wanted to make sure that he'd still be able to ring the bell on the float because Mr. John told him that was okay, even though I told him it wasn't. But that really just encapsulates, I think, who John is to me. I mean, he, he's the epitome of a mentor. For so many people, he's the epitome of fun. And the motto in this district is that we provide more than a remarkable education. And I think in order to do that, we have to have remarkable people up at the top. And John is one of those remarkable people. I met John in 2011 when I was picked to be on the Financial Futures Committee. I just moved back to town in 2010. And in fact, when I moved back in the spring and my wife and I were looking for a house here in Arlington, there were these blue and purple signs up in April and they said, John Hibbs and Jamie Sullins. And I wondered who they were. And little did I know, I'd meet them pretty shortly and made a profound impact on my life, among many others. John is remarkable because as we got to know each other and he shared a little bit of his history, so much of what he did on this board to promote educational equity in this district made a lot of sense. And I talked to John earlier today and he said it was okay to share this, but, you know, I think so much of what John has done has come from a personal place for him. He was the first person in his family to not only attend college, but to graduate from high school. And is somebody who was the first person in my family to attend college. And people who are in a similar situation will tell you that, that heart that you have for people and helping people make their lives better doesn't go away because it's embedded within you. And that's certainly true for John. And I've seen it in just about everything that he's done on this board, from helping me learn the ropes when I got here as a new board member, to going out in 2014 with me, on the bond campaign in 2014, we had the opportunity to speak together to a few community groups. And it was just, he has helped guide my role on this board and so many others in this district to make it a better place. And John, you're gonna be missed and I hope you're not a stranger. Thanks.
So I'm going to read a statement from Mr. Hogg and then if you'd like Dr. Kavasos, then I'll end. Bowie just, his allergies were just too much. He couldn't stand to be here tonight. In all seriousness, he's stuck, stuck on a plane or from out of town trying to get home. So he did prepare some remarks for me to read on his behalf for you. So this is from Bowie Hogg. I'm sorry I cannot be in attendance to honor our colleague, my good friend, a mentor, and true public servant, John Hibbs. I was scheduled to be home for this meeting, but weather and a broken plane has me stuck in Washington, DC trying to get home. Service to our students, staff, and community is essential to the success of this district. I am proud of this board and the things we have accomplished over these last nine years, such as developing a strategic plan, making the decision to hire Dr. Kavasos, being awarded the Board of the Year in the state of Texas, a game-changing bond, and so many things that make a difference for students and staff daily. John, you have led so many of these issues. We are forever in your debt and will continue the path you worked so hard to create. It has been a pleasure to serve with you and experience the highs and lows, from the many, many meetings to late-night phone calls about meetings, the many school visits, some votes that were easy and some that were the hardest thing possible. I was proud to do it with you. I could always trust you and knew the best interest. interest of the kids, staff, and this community were always at the forefront of every decision. Every day, you were willing to fight for the kids of this district, and I truly appreciate it as someone who grew up in this district and is trusting this district with my eldest daughter entering kindergarten in the fall. An even bigger blessing is getting to know your family, and a personal thank you to your family for letting us borrow Ranger John to serve this district so faithfully. I also must thank you for showing me what it takes to raise two daughters and balance the love of your wife and family with public service and a thriving career. You do it well, and you have helped me on a personal level that I can never repay. The last note: Thank you for showing your faith in everything you do. As a man of faith as well, I thank you for your ministry, and God bless you with a gift to minister to all. As you leave this area of public service, I leave you with a verse so you eloquently used at our 2014 district convocation, 1 Peter 5:7, "Cast all your anxiety on him, because he cares for you." We care for you and are thankful for you. What better way to leave this than "Well done, good and faithful servant," Bowie J. Hogg.
Mr. Hibbs, in complete disclosure, all current and former board members are my favorite board members. Okay? So I just think I'd start with that. However, tonight, you're special, John. You have taught us so much, and you have helped us collectively so much. And you lead with the heart, and that's rare, to lead with the heart but also have the finances in mind, the people in mind, the future in mind, the tradition, the legacy of this school district, the support for our students, the equity, all those things that are so important in a governance role, but to lead with the heart. And John, you have done that for year after year. And you've taught us how to be better together, how to be better individually, how to be better people, and how to take some joy in life. And I remember, you know, since there was a picture of the parade, it reminded me that in one of those parades, Christmas parades, you know, it's a busy time and all that. And so we asked you if you could, from my phone, take a picture of our family while we were there, just really quick. By the time we got the phone back, there were several pictures of John Hibbs looking at the phone. And I think he's done that to several people over and over, and opening his mouth, and sticking out his tongue, and all this kind of stuff. But that's a special memory, John. We won't delete those photos. But I also reflect, John, on the wisdom and the wisdom that you provide. We have the opportunity with every board member, I have the opportunity to meet on a one-to-one. And for Mr. Hibbs, it would be breakfast every month, once a month. And, you know, John would come in, and, you know, he's fired up, like he always is, and energetic and all this, and we'd have a lot of great conversation. When John would bring a pen and a pad, I knew that there was something going on, and that he wanted something special to be paid attention to, and I completely get that. John, you have done so much for this school district, and you are the heart and soul. You provide a lot to the culture of this district, and forever, students will have felt the benefit of John Hibbs serving on the school board. And on a personal note, John, you helped me right at the beginning when I was interim superintendent through a lot of wisdom and advice and guidance. And for that, I will be forever grateful. So, Mr. Hibbs, I love you and thank you for your service.
John, there's not, there's not much left to say. It's been pretty well-covered. And I absolutely concur with everything that has been said. The nine years, the hundreds of official meetings on this dais, the thousands of other meetings and interactions and communications, all of which are always positive communications, that is something that I think you have taught each and every one of us, something that we already know but to instill in us deeper in our hearts, to continue to be as positive as possible all the time. I'm always going to be grateful to you for that. It's certainly helped me in my personal life. We have seen such transformation in our district with the strategic plan and the bond and leadership development and culminations to Board of the Year and Superintendent of the Year. And that is, there's so much more, and it's just, it's amazing to have your fingerprints on each and every one of those things. It's an incredible legacy. You have been part of and purposeful in changing the game for generations to come in Arlington. As was mentioned, we are all talking, for the most part, about what you've done here in service to this district. You have touched and had service all over this community in so many facets. And so we are blessed that we got to hold on to you here for nine years on this board. And I know it wasn't an easy decision to hang it up and to move on. It's an incredible amount of time, an incredible amount of sacrifice. It's completely rewarding. It's almost addictive in that regard. But it does, it does take its toll. It is tough. And I know that the toughest decision of all was to walk away. And you are doing that this evening, and that's a void that will always be there on this board and in our hearts. You have been a staunch advocate always for this community first, the district, the students, the staff. And you have always put yourself out there as the catcher of the rocks, if there's rocks to be had, standing in that gap for us, for the administration, for so many in this district. And each and every time you did that, I thought, gosh, you're amazing. Why are you doing that? You don't deserve to take those on. But you were always willing to do that for this board, for this community. And it was always nice to be able to, every now and then, remind you that you're in it with us. It's not us. But thank you for that cover. Thank you for that positive interaction and communication that you always had, even during some of the most tumultuous times that we've had in our district. You were always out there leading and standing in that gap for us. The last thing that I want to say, which I've always said is essential, to be able to lead from this elected position, and it's to, it's to see the forest through the trees. It's to look down the road at what potential unintended consequence there may be on any level, on any situation. And John, you have done it, in my opinion, better than anyone in always looking down the road and always being the one to stand up at times when it may not be the popular thing to do, to say, "Yeah, but if we do this, what is that going to do for our district? What is that going to do for the community? What's it going to do for the kids?" You've always been there. You've always had that forecasting, and that comes from your heart. That comes from your great intellect. And I'm going to miss that. And I look very forward to what life presents you with further away from this dais. But know that you are always here in our hearts, and you're always welcome in this boardroom at any time. And thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being an incredible leader and trustee. And I will just have to say that I've had to just totally check my emotions at the door and compartmentalize this, otherwise I wouldn't be able to make it through this. My allergies would be really bad. Before we go further, I would like to ask our mayor, please, to come down and share some words. We're so thankful that you're able to be here. Mayor Williams?
President Raj, Superintendent Cavazos, school board members, administration, it is an honor to be in front of the best school superintendent in Texas and the best school board in Texas, and to be able to honor one of Arlington's finest, John Hibbs. Tonight, I have been at the Mayor's Youth Commission, talking to some of Arlington ISD's finest students, all about giving back to the community. And all I could think about, these kids need to be like John Hibbs. It was awesome. Here are all the things that I'm talking to them about John has done: passion for his community, passion for education, and then using all of his resources, whatever it may be, to come to a result that will make a difference for our kids and further education here in our community. You know, I saw him and Mary throughout the years before he ever was on the school board, doing so many different things there in our, in our school district, all the way from booster clubs to PTA to fundraisers to getting bonds passed, to whatever it took, John was there. And then in addition to that, I love what many of you said is John's wisdom. You know, he sits back and studies. He really does analyze the situation. And then when John speaks, we know that a great idea is coming out. And you notice how everybody kind of sits up in their chair when John Hibbs says something. But John has that gift too of humor. You know, when things are really tough, he also can really zen ya and come in. And then if he doesn't right then, he'll do it on Facebook. And of course, he may enlist Garrett Hill or Holly Parte Harvey, or of course, his sidekick, Jamie Sullins, there without a doubt. And of course, Jamie left us and went down to Austin, and, I'll wait just a minute, I don't know what this is, it keeps buzzing. Y'all, this is from the Texas Department of Transportation. "I'm sad to report that Interstate 35 has been shut down for the next two years, and all flights are canceled from DFW to Austin indefinitely." Jamie, I'm sorry. Actually, I just pulled a Hibbs. That's what John Hibbs would do. You know, I had to share a little bit about what John, of course, John would have had it all over Facebook. He would have had a costume too and come in. Of course, costumes are always a part of John and Mary. And then I don't want to leave Mary out because she is a remarkable woman, and the two of them make quite a team. They're in it, and they breathe into each other. John, appreciate your faith. And then also, I do appreciate that you're not moving to Austin, and that you're going to be here. And we're still praying, Jamie, that you're going to come back. And Tony Pampa, thank you for you and Julie staying, even though you're making it big and doing all of us proud. But y'all, that is what it's all about. And then just in general, here, here in education, y'all have so many challenges there. You're doing extraordinary work under very difficult circumstances, because we all know we have to do more, and we have to gather people together. And thank you, John, for being a person that brings people together and keeps that can-do spirit of Arlington alive because you value people, and you know how to bring them together, and then to work hard right beside us to make a difference. Thank you, John Hibbs. You're special. And yes, it's a great night in Arlington, John. Thank you very much.
John, if you wouldn't mind accompanying myself and Dr. Cavazos down to the podium, we have some things to present to you.
Everybody, I'm so sorry that you had to show up tonight. I'm Mr. Brian. You work with installments.
Come on here in the middle, Mr. Hibbs. So, I bet you were expecting children on a swing, weren't you? So this is, this is different, but it is still children playing on a ladder. And what I would like to say is it's to make you think of your nine years of service was just easy as walking in a park, right? We all know that was sarcasm. Nine years of incredible service, always with these children in mind. You have done an amazing thing. God is shining down proud all around us. Thank you, John, for everything.
John, as part of our kind of retirement celebration, we do have a crystal bowl for you as part of, of a parting gift. It's actually for Mary, I think. No, I'm kidding. It's for John. And so, John, on behalf of our school district, thank you for your service to our school district, and we appreciate it.
Now, we're not done. There's another, another recognition. And, yeah, please. Mary Hibbs, could you come up here? If you wouldn't mind, please, standing here next to your husband. Mary, thank you for your service and your sacrifice these nine years. You're a special kind of person. I will tell you that you are this man's foundation. You are his rock. And if it wasn't for your support and your sacrifice and your sharing, your ability to share him with us, we wouldn't have had him. This district would be completely different. Thank you for that. As is demonstrable in the slideshow and the pictures, there's a lot of Mary Hibbs. Probably a lot that she didn't want you to see, but there's a lot of Mary Hibbs. And that's, that's evidence of you always being there by his side. And we know in the background, you're always there. Thank you. We're going to miss you, probably more than you, John. But we appreciate your sacrifice, your care, your compassion, your love for children. And you're an amazing individual. We are blessed with you. He is, of course, way blessed with you, married up for sure. But- It's a compliment. He knows. I'm speaking the truth. We love you. We love both of you as a couple, and we look so forward to what the future brings to keep us all together. And so here, this is what you get, a piece of paper out of all that. It's what you get. Now, you get just a little bit more, which is one of our pins. I don't think you have one, unless it's from off of his suit. John's not wearing his. He's already done. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being you. Appreciate you. Love you. Can she sit down? No, let's have, let's have one picture with all of us, and then maybe with John. I'll set this down. Oh, there's girls. Yeah. So Christian wasn't able to be here. Thank you, Spence. See, Spence is in control of everything. He knows. So we have Erin and Jamie in the audience as well, John's daughters. Come on up here. Yes. And I'd like to say thank you for your sacrifices as well, supporting your dad as he served so many other children in this community. And I'll have to say to Erin specifically, as also having a child that went through high school while their dad was a trustee, I know what kind of sacrifice that means as well. It's a whole different level. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. So yes, here's the Hibbs family. I know Christian's here in spirit, but what a remarkable blessing, what a remarkable family. So give him a round of applause. Do you think we should let him speak? Yes, of course. John, you can use the mic. You can use the podium.
Whatever you like. Ladies and gentlemen, I really am sorry that some of you would like to see business. Some of your kids want to get home. We're going to let, make this happen, because we want to make sure that we get our fabulous new principal, Mary Moore, signed on and approved tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to tell you that it has been such an honor to be able to serve this district, serving for nine years. One of the things that, the greatest thing that I could do for our district, our teachers, our administrators, or other board members, is that at least twice a year, I got to pray for every teacher by name. You guys are so impactful. You are the game changers. You're the people that we need to support. Our kids are so fortunate because of our 8,000 employees, and that's what makes AISD, AISD a family. It's more than just a district. Things don't always go the way we want them to. We struggle. We make mistakes. We try to learn from them and move forward. But you, the teachers, I get to speak to the Mary Moore family tonight, but this is inclusive of all our 75 campuses. Each and every day, you've got kids that are coming in from all different walks, with the whole different needs and all different problems. You know, you, you get to hear what the issues are. The ones that are hungry, the ones that struggle because there's only mom at home, or there's only dad at home, or in some cases, a big brother or big sister's trying to raise kids. Those are all actualities in our district, which you guys can change a life. Give a, you know, break generational poverty, and that's what we are doing as a district. That's what you're doing as a board. That's what you are doing as administrators. We're being able to give light. We're giving an opportunity, like the Dan Diaper Center, you know? Sometimes we, we got in this one path for so long that we thought everybody was college bound, and that's not a reality. We had to give kids more than the opportunity just to graduate. We need to give them the opportunity to have skills, to be able to take on jobs that will be high paying. What we realize, Ms. Sullins, Mr. Pampa, this board here, and some others that, that have come through, realize that in Texas alone, last year, 300,000 skilled positions, high-paying skilled positions went unfilled, because the kids that were coming out of high school weren't prepared. That Dan Diaper Center today is busting at its seams and going to be giving kids that graduate from high school this year, the opportunity to go out $68,000, $70,000 to be a HAVC mechanic, to be able to be a welder. You guys are making the change. You're making the change. But I'm going to tell you, it starts with direction. I truly believe that we've got the best superintendent in the country. And whereas, we've got a bunch of young ones, including Ms. Walton over here. These people get after it, and they work diligently. I mean, they put in 20, 40, sometimes even 60 hours unpaid. This elected position is the only unpaid position in the state of Texas. These people are truly volunteer servants. They take a lot of grief sometimes, and I understand it, because you know what? We all are champions for our kids. And we need to be. But these people have a heart and a passion. I've been fortunate to be able to serve, and I thank each and every person in this room for the opportunity to do so. For a board, I give you the challenge and the charge that you guys are going to come up against a lot of difficult things. And you know, sometimes people will say that it's not bad to have a four-three vote sometimes. Sometimes it's, you know, I've, one thing I think each person up here will tell you is that I've always said, "Vote your conscience." If you're voting your conscience, then you're doing what you believe is true. But there's also a point that's called compromise. You're a team of eight, come together each and every opportunity that you can. You know, try to put forth to the, the people that sit in this audience, that you're united, and you want to move this district, district in the right direction. For teachers, hold them accountable. But also, for you, understand that there's not a single person up here that doesn't struggle with how much of a raise can we give, or how much, you know, how we manage minutes. You know, it's a tough thing. It's a very tough thing. And sometimes, we have to get our hands dirty. And with that, Mr. Pampa, I've been holding on to your hand sanitizer since you've left the board, so I've got that for you. But, but in closing, guys, thank you. Thank you for the honor to be able to serve. Thank you for the honor to be able to pray for you. Thank you for the honor of, man, just allowing me to have the best of times. But, you know, the only true reason I ever ran for school board is because my wife was always known in Arlington, and I was Mary Hibbs' husband, so I needed my own right. No, but truly, I'm blessed. I'm blessed beyond belief. She's been my girlfriend for 38 years, and we've been married for 34. So, pretty lucky to have her, my two daughters, and my son. With that, I'm going to ride off in the sunset. You guys be good.
Well, before you go, John, yeah, don't, don't go too far. We do have an appointment on our agenda, and after that appointment, it's our, our custom to break and have a, a opportunity to congratulate and welcome the appointee. I know you, you have, you have things to do this evening, but we, we would love it if you're able to stay for just a few minutes.
I would love that from Mr. Prang, if I can make the motion.
All right, well, let's.
When we get there.
When we get there. All right. We will do it as fast as we can, Mr. Hibbs, I promise. With that said, we will move to appointments. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to recommend the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for principal of Mary Moore Elementary.
I'm trying here. Mr. Hibbs?
President Rice. This gentleman's mother is one of our grand-grandteachers in, in our district, and that's Valerie Prang. And anybody that comes from that offspring should be a principal of a, of a elementary school. I move that we, I move that we accept the administrative appointment.
Thank you. Ms. Walton?
I second Mr. Hibbs' motion.
All right. So, we have a, a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Walton, to approve the principal for Mary Moore Elementary. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Congratulations. Dr. Cavazos, please.
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to introduce somebody you already know. Nathan Prang is the principal of Mary Moore Elementary. Nathan attended Baylor University for his Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration, Lamar University for his Master of Ed in Ed Administration, most recently the interim principal at Mary Moore Elementary, has been an assistant principal at Gunn Junior High, and has been a math teacher-coach in Burtville ISD. Nathan, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Dr. Rice, Dr. Cavazos, school board, John, thank you so much for your service. I was mad because I went over my speech with John, and he stole the whole thing, so that wasn't very nice. So, I have to like, do this from scratch. But to the board, you put in countless hours on top of your own personal responsibilities to ensure that our school district is operating at a high level. So, for that, I'm grateful. For Dr. Cavazos, your ability to drive leaders in this district is one of the main reasons I'm in the position I'm in today. Your stories of your own leadership development, your constant focus on making sure our job is focused on what's best for kids, and your ability to help people believe in themselves, continue to push educators to fulfill their dreams of leadership within this district. My next thank you goes to my mentors, friends, and coworkers who have pushed me to live big, to drive myself toward my goal of becoming a principal. Mr. Vee? Where is that man? There he is in the back. Looking good with those muscles, man. You gave me my first opportunity in administration. I will be forever grateful. You, you put me in situations that allowed for me to learn what it takes to be a successful educational leader, and from day one told me that you knew I would be an excellent principal. So, thank you for that. Finally, my most important thank you goes to my family, who are my biggest cheerleaders, my wife and kids that are here. It was funny, because Everett, I think, is back there, and that's where he was four years ago too, because he just can't handle the situation. He's got allergies, I guess. We have celebrated with me this amazing journey the last three months. My parents, my sister have always supported me. Four years ago, I stood in front of this board after being named the assistant principal of Gunn Junior High, and I, I watched that video recently, and at that time, I pledged that I would assist our school in instilling a culture of success and a drive in our students to reach their academic goals. Now, I stated that I was confident, it was a, it was a strong confidence, that we would take giant steps in improving our campus, and that the success of our campus would not just be known in the junior high community, but our ideas and achievements will make a significant impact on this entire district. So, for the last four years, I've been a part of a leadership team that's received all seven distinctions every year. Our school developed data tracking systems that other campuses travel to our, to our place to see. Each year, we reached all of our campus goals, and finally, we were granted the opportunity to present the Model Schools Conference in Orlando, Florida. The impact that we had on students was incredible, but as much as I feel like we made an impact on our kids, they'll never know the enormous impact that they made on me and our team. I witnessed 13- and 14-year-olds overcome incredible hardships and succeed when the odds were against them. I listened to multiple students talk to me about how no one has ever given them a chance, and all they wanted in life is something, somebody tell you, tell them that they were important to this world. I learned that in order to stirren a school from good to great, that it is all about the kids, and about all kids. As difficult that it may be, the expectation of any teacher, administrator, and even community member, is to make sure that each student that walks through the doors of an AISD school is given a chance, a chance to succeed, a chance to research for potential, a chance to dream dreams that we will help them realize, and like John said, an opportunity. One of the most impactful moments in my career happened just this year while sitting in the office of our other assistant principal, Mr. Garcia. We were brainstorming about what options were there for a kid at our campus who continuously struggled to be successful. The passion that exuded from Mr. Garcia when talking about the student and how he wanted to help them was infectious. He said to me, "Nathan, I want to make sure that when this student leaves our building, that I know I have done absolutely everything I can to give him an opportunity to be successful." And this resonated with me then and will resonate with me for the rest of my life and the rest of my career. Each student that I encounter, each teacher that I'm given the opportunity to support, and each parent that needs some guidance in how to help their kid, I need to make sure I've done everything I can in order to ensure that each person has the opportunity to be at their very best. You see, leadership is not about being an individual. Leadership is about developing a community, a community whose foundation is built upon characteristics such as trust, compassion, joy, desire, positivity, and hope. And no matter the type of community a leader is leading, each person within that community needs to feel as if they matter. Each member needs to feel that each move and decision that they make has the ability to make a positive and significant impact on the growth of the community. Mary Moore Elementary, these are, it's crazy how many people came. I can't turn around. It's filled with incredible educators. An active and supportive parent group, and over 900 young minds just beginning to understand what they're fully capable of achieving. As a leader of Mary Moore, I will develop a culture where teachers are given the opportunity to not just help our kids achieve, but the ability to grow and reach their full potential as a leader in their classroom. As a leader of Mary Moore, I will ensure that students are given the opportunity to fall in love with learning and push, and push to dream big dreams. I look forward to leading this fantastic community, and I thank you again for allowing me to have this opportunity to be the next principal at Mary Moore. Thank you.
Congratulations. Impactful words. Truly leading by example. Thank you for what you will do in the future at, at the campus as principal. Thank you to all of you for being amazing individuals in your own right, all leading by example. You're absolutely right. There are so many children that we, as a community, as you said, ha, it's our responsibility, it's our job to find within them that they may not know they have. Thank you for stepping up and stepping in that gap for our community at Mary Moore. Thank you. As is our custom, I would ask that you please follow Mr. Cale out to that lobby so that we can have that reception and welcome you. Mr. Hibbs, I would ask that you follow as well. And, and. He just wants to go. And if you would, please, audience indulge the board, allow us to go first so that we can come back in here and continue business while you all celebrate out there. We will be back at approximately 8:45. Take a brief recess. Time is 8:47. We'll convene back from our recess. Next, on our agenda, there's placeholder for public hearing. We do not have a public hearing. So, we will continue on to the section of open forum for agenda items. I do have some cards from individuals wishing to speak. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It's not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. I do have four cards here from our audience. So, when your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. There's a lighted timer on the podium. It will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. The first card I have tonight is from Teresa Cortez. The subject is character reference. Ms. Cortez?
Good afternoon.
Evening.
I'm Teresa Cortez, and I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank God as well. This is my first time, so I'm just going to go with what I have written, so. I would like to start by saying how important teachers are to our children. All children should be given the opportunity to learn and to strive and to become the very best that they can be. This opportunity comes with great teachers, teachers that are compassionate, teachers that share passion for helping to instill in our children courage to try, to achieve, to excel greatness, even in the face of adversity. Every teacher tries to put forth this effort, but some are gifted more than others by God. They are called to this field of education, and I believe that when we have such an educator, a person of passion for our children, that we should hold on to that particular teacher. Our schools need to see a reflection of our world and our culture through the eyes of diversity. African-American educators in our school is very needed, and even their presence is a statement, although quiet is very profound. We need more people of color to encourage our own children for the possibilities that lies ahead for their own lives and their own future. As I look around this room today, I see greatness in all of you. And I would like to see the same equal representation in all of our children at all of the schools and schools like Carter and all of these schools that are represented here in this great city of Arlington. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, is it, I'm having a hard time reading the script. Is it Cristiana Adjeokun?
Oh, Adjeokun, please.
Adjeokun? Please, please, come forward. Subject is teacher probationary terms.
Good evening. My name is Cristiana Adjeokun, and I am Ms. Arlington. Today, I'm here to talk and share about why we need great teachers. I have the honor of representing the city of Arlington, and the one thing that I've noticed is our teachers. Our teachers have shaped who we are today, especially me. Without my teachers, I wouldn't have gained the confidence that I have right now to speak in front of you wonderful people right now. I actually had a teacher who formerly taught at Carter Junior High, and she was my Spanish teacher. When it came to the subject of Spanish, I thought that I wasn't good at it at all because I am Nigerian-American, and I knew Yoruba and English, and that's all I thought I was going to know. But she pushed me. She told me to be confident in myself and to know that I can do anything I can do and want to do if I put my mind to it. Today, I'm sitting as an AP student for Spanish language, and I'm about to take my test next week. And in addition... In addition, when enrolling to Texas Tech University this fall, I will actually be able to have the opportunity to opt out of Spanish language due to the credits that I've taken. It's teachers like this who inspire students like me to be great. I have teachers who have taught me how to speak well, which is why, or to also volunteer for my community. Teachers in Arlington ISD are very important, and one thing they also stress is community service. Because the teachers that I've had in my lifetime, I have over 2,000 community service hours, and I'm still going on. And I learned from their service, the AISD teachers have, they give their time and, sorry, they leave their time for us and volunteer several hours to make sure that we're the best students that we are. Now, students like me and around the community do things like, for example, I am a youth defense attorney for the city of Arlington, volunteering my time to make other students better, and I'm also a youth senator for the state of Texas. Teachers in AISD have helped me become who I am today. They've shaped me to know that I could be a global leader, and I can motivate others to do the same. We need more teachers that motivate students, that believe in students, that encourage students to be confident in themselves and to better their surroundings. We need the new future leaders of America. I am just one example of what an AISD teacher can do. Imagine all the thousands of other students who are going through the same process, too, who are becoming leaders, who are becoming avid servant leaders in their community. And that, with that, I relinquish the remainder of my time to the president. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, Linda McSwain. Is that a Linda McSwain? Okay, we'll move on. The last card for agenda items, Dr. Katherine Clark Thompson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to say I am so excited to be here, truly, I am. I was anticipating coming up speaking in regards to one particular thing, and then as I just kind of heard some of the things that are going on just today and with Mr. Hibbs as well, and then Mr. Justin Chappa and I are both products of Sam Houston High School, so I now reside in the Houston area. I went to Thornton Elementary, went to Carter Junior High School for a little bit, also Hutchison Junior High, and then went on to Sam Houston High School. Three degrees at this point, first one to graduate high school and also college as far as my immediate family is concerned. So I'm really just excited just to kind of be here. I told Justin I'm so extremely proud of him as well. But what I wanted to just kind of talk about just a little bit, on the agenda for the consent items, we have consider personnel recommendation, new hires, retirement, resignations, leaves of absences, dismissals, terminations, non-renewals, non-extentions. And then also going up to action item A as well, consider approval of teacher probationary and term contracts. And so I know that with AISD, as far as the probationary contracts are concerned, that it initiates with the three-year period. And so one of the things I was kind of thinking about is what the stigma was, the character of just the student body, and the camaraderie is the word that I'm looking for when I was there. So we had a couple of different, you know, principals that went through Sam Houston while I was there for the four years, and I kind of looked up some statistics as far as where the district is right now, specifically Sam Houston High School, because I know that not just the elementary schools, but the middle schools as well, moving into Sam Houston. I looked at the minority, the minority component, you know, as far as the ratios of the students, the percentage of the students, in addition to the ethnicities of the teachers as well. And so when I heard Ms. Arlington speaking, it made me proud, you know, to know that she's Ms. Arlington, Nigerian descent, you know, American, and all the things that she's accomplished, you know, as of right now. And so I just wanted to kind of hit on a couple of things that I'm sure behind the scenes that you guys are definitely aware of, but I wanted to bring them to the forefront now and then kind of end sliding into the items on the agenda that I want to address. And so one of the things that I've learned, I am a community advocate in Houston. I deal a lot with sex trafficking, sexual assault, domestic violence, you know. If it's in the community and I run into, I come in contact with the founder of an organization or individual that it's passionate about, and they're able to share their vision with me, then I am the individual that they can connect with. I get phone calls all the time in regards to, you know, assisting them behind the scenes as far as packaging and sponsorship packages and master budgets and everything that it takes as far as proposals and to get these things together. But I did learn some years ago that as far as the start testing is concerned, that they start building prisons in the state of Texas based on the third-grade start testing, start testing, the reading, the math, and it was very alarming to me, and I think that that's kind of what geared me in the area of dealing with at-risk youth as well. And so as far as this college success is concerned with Sam Houston High School particularly, that's in AISD, we are below average as far as the in-state college enrollment is concerned. We are above average in the percentage of students that must take remedial classes before they take their college prep class, before they actually take their college course classes. In addition to that, one of the things that I wrote down and definitely wanted to make note of is that Sam Houston High School is 73, a little over 73% of have at-risk students, 73%. And would you believe that, I'm sure you know, that 85, more than 85% of those are economically disadvantaged? 20% African-American, 70% Hispanic. So now we're talking about my passion and what I feel like I know that I was created for, and the disadvantaged, the low-income poverty communities. And not only that, the main thing, now I'm getting back to the items on the agenda, there are 139% white teachers at Sam Houston High School. 48% are black, 40% Hispanic. And I think that we need to take a little bit more thought into the three-year probationary period that you guys have, and especially when it comes to the minority teachers. Some sort of assessment, examination, reviewing the files, some sort of hearings as well. Because some of these teachers, we all have struggles, we all have trials, and we want to ensure that we know them as a person, what they do in their communities, in the schools, extracurricular things, things that they don't have to do, because we all know teachers are underpaid and overworked. So if they're doing extracurricular things as far as PTA, putting together student award ceremonies, mentoring programs for minority, young girls in these schools, we need to take those things into consideration because it could be your child, a friend of yours that's a minority. And we want to think, I just want you guys to think about those things, not just what's in the file, but sit down with the person, have a conversation, have a discussion, ask questions, find out why, before we just immediately decide to dismiss. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much to all the speakers this evening. Next, we come to action items. Action item A, consider approval of teacher probationary and term contracts. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to recommend the approval of the teacher probationary and term contracts as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Mrs. Fowler?
I move to approve the teacher probationary and term contracts as presented.
Mr. Chappa?
I'd second, and I have a note to make as well.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. A motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Chappa, and entering into discussion, please.
Yeah, so I will be voting in favor of action item A, and I'm just noting for the record that my vote, given the number of people who are a part of that action item, I'm just, would like the record to reflect that my vote in favor is not as to Sarah Holder, who's a teacher-coach at Bowie High School. Because of our familial relationship, I will be abstaining as to the vote on her contract.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote. Motion carries by the five of us remaining. All right. Excuse us just a moment. Do we know what section, what it would be specific to? Okay, so we can, we can come back to that, that's fine. In the meantime, we'll continue on. Thank you. Okay, next, on the action items, item B, consider the approval of term and probationary contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, President Rice. Recommend the approval of the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff as presented.
Mrs. Mays?
I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff as presented.
Okay. There's a motion, and Ms. Walton?
I will second Ms. Mays' motion.
So there's a motion by Mrs. Mays, a second by Ms. Walton, to approve the term and probationary contracts for administrative and professional staff. I see for discussion, Mr. Chappa?
Similar to action item A, on action item B, my vote in favor will be an abstention as to Terry Chappa, who's a facilitator listed as an administrative and professional staff member, and on the basis of a familial relationship.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, vote in the affirmative. Motion carries. And I believe that's it as far as action items, correct? Move on? Okay. The motion was made by Mrs. Mays, seconded by Ms. Walton. All right, so we will hold on just one moment. We'll back up to make sure that you're heard. So we're going to go to just one more section on the open forum for agenda items, and you, were you, let's see, Ms., is it Deryka Williams? Were you present when I was talking about the rules, the timer and everything? Did you hear all of that? Okay, great. Well, then, if you wouldn't mind, then come on, come on down, and we will absolutely listen to what you have to say. Yes, Deryka Williams.
De Erika.
De Erika. Sorry, thank you.
I was coming to speak with, I had spoke with John, Mr. Hopp, before he had left, about a program that I'm trying to start up at TCC for minorities, for black students. I pretty much... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm starting, I'm a student at TCC. I changed my major to education. I was going for business in financing, and I still want to major in that, and I want, I was starting a program... and I want, I was starting a program with Angela Cole at TCC in North Ridgely Hills, out there at the Hearst location, and John had told me to go ahead and send him an email on my business plan and what I'm trying to do for the minorities in the Arlington District. When I first moved here from St. Louis, I moved here by myself for only eighteen hundred dollars to pursue my dreams to have a, a better environment for where I came from. I came from East St. Louis, Illinois, I don't know if y'all know about that, but that's one of the, one of the top things, and it's low-grade in Illinois, and it really don't have, you know, a lot of opportunities for African-Americans, especially for us. And so, when I came here, I started a program, finding generational wealth for students, and I feel like there should be a program or a class for students from the age, from the seventh grade all the way into high school, that way we can learn how to save. And it's just not for us, you know, African-American, it's for Latinos that I speak with every day that don't know about credit, financing, investment, business, they don't know about anything. So now that I'm in college and I'm learning these type of skills, and I see that my younger generation or students or even siblings, because my boyfriend served in the military, we have younger siblings that we're trying to help to get up here to show them a better life, and I just think that we should be more involved with our kids. And I love that he said that every kid is not meant to go to college, there's other ways out here that you can be a millionaire. But I feel like if we train up our child, which they will go, they will never depart. And I feel like if we show them that when they're at a young age, they would know how to save, they would know how to, you know, how to feel to go off to college, to have five or six thousand saved up, the way they can pay for certain things. Everybody don't have the money to do that, and I feel like we have created so much debt into educational loans, because right now, I'm not even up there, and UTA is way out of my league. And I have to keep asking my father, can you help me? But I want to be more independent for myself. And if I learned that and helped the young generation, we will stop so much debt, it helps so many succeeding students, where to go back to what she said, we will have more students graduating, helping us, doing certain things, to even see a young, young African-American black girl pushing forth, because I'm telling you right now, I had an IEP all through school, had to take basic classes to get up on par to even go to school, but I succeeded every single one. And I'm just so glad today that I even, I even passed all my finals with Bs. So I'm just saying, like, if you keep on pushing and putting the work, I feel like it would get done. And I thank you so much for giving me the time and the opportunity to speak, and I really apologize, I was just trying to, you know, get my word out there, because I feel like there's so many people that look like me that don't have the information, the twos, but I feel like in the school system, we should train up our child to be more than a nine-to-five worker.
Thank you very much for, for your comments, and thank you for your service as well, appreciate that. I, I would also say, we don't respond back. A name for you, Mr. Aaron Peralis, he's our Director of Parent and Community Engagement, might want to have a conversation with him. Oh, good. Oh, yes, good, very good. Absolutely. All right, so we will continue back to where we were when we stopped here for just a moment. Discussion, action on the, we have one item, the nineteen and twenty Student Code of Conduct. I believe we're, we're tabling that, but I would allow Mr. Chapa to give some explanation.
Thank you, President Rice. So the Governance Committee has been looking at annual recommendations on various amendments to the Student Code of Conduct. In general, the amendments are pretty light that we're looking at, that have been proposed by the administration. Many of them fall into the, you know, legal changes that have been recommended by our attorneys or by TASB in some way. We're also looking at some minor revisions to the student, student dress code, and we've sent some information back, information requests back to the administration regarding some proposed changes to the Code of Conduct in the area of social-emotional learning. And we look forward as, to looking at those over the next couple of weeks and bringing the Code of Conduct forward again at the May sixteenth meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that explanation, we'll look forward to seeing that again as discussion action moving forward on the next agenda. Next, we move to consent and items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items trustees wish to be withdrawn from the consent? Seeing none, we will move on to consent to approve the items that are listed on the agenda under consent. And Ms. Powell, could you please share bids that we have on the agenda?
President Rice, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening. We have for your consideration tonight fourteen bids, and in all cases, the administration recommends the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have for your consideration this evening donations that total fifty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars, and that brings our year-to-date total to one million two thousand four hundred and eight dollars.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Bye, Ms. Teen Arlington, thanks for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much for having me.
Absolutely. Very good. Are, are there any, any items to discuss, any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent. Mr. Chapa?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Ms., Ms. Walton?
I will second Mr. Chapa's motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Chapa, a second by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Consent passes. Very good. Thank you. Now we will move on to our discussion items, the first one of which is the TASB Board Policy Update Number One Twelve. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Rice, and we have another opportunity to review our policies and to update our policies, both legal and local. And so, Mr. Hill is guiding us through that and has been working with the Governance Committee, and he has a brief presentation just on this policy update.
Another opportunity. Update One Twelve. Greetings, President Rice, board, and Dr. Kavasos, as we are here to discuss Policy Update One Twelve. Again, One Twelve addresses several changes in law, both legal and local, including some administrative code changes. As you all know, the legal policies are the law, it's what we have to do, there's not any movement on that, and the local policies need board adoption, board action to adopt, revise, or repeal any local policy. The process that we've taken thus far is we've reviewed this, the policies from TASB with the appropriate staff and departments, including the Board Governance Committee. Our General Counsel has had an opportunity to look at this, and we are in constant communication with the Texas Association of School Boards regarding this. Update One Twelve has forty, forty-one legal policies and fourteen local policies up for consideration. Here, here are those policies, they are the legal in the right larger column, the locals in the smaller left column. Just to look at a few of the policies that are the local policies, CH Local, and again, this is not all of them, but we'll just hit a few of the high points. The district may reject bids in accordance with the state law or federal law as applicable. CQ talks about technology resources and when we use online communications, that there's authentication processes that are required. DH Local Employee Standards of Conduct deals with employees who are making false statements and how we can address that. FNG, GF, and GKA all deal with parent complaints, and that's a policy that's been in effect, and we've already been operating under that, it's just now getting into the update, and that basically gives anybody that we prohibit from campuses the right to the appeals process. And GKB deals with the advertising and how we reserve the right to approve or not approve certain advertising requirements or requests. CNA deals with transportation management and how districts should seek reimbursement for transportation in less than two miles. DFE deals with the termination of employment, and DP deals with some new rules for the aspect for personnel positions. Again, we vetted these through all of our departments internally, as well as with the Governance Committee and TASB. Our next step, so we continue to review these and see if there are any changes or any tweaks that are necessary, and then we anticipate bringing this back to the board on the, on the sixteenth for discussion and potential action. At this point, we'll take any questions from One Twelve.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Whoa, hold on here. Ms. Mays, please.
Thank you, President Rice. Someone asked me to ask this question. So, the, the update has sixty-six policies, and we're aware of legal and we're aware of local. So, we, we had fifty-five here, does that mean that there's eleven that were not updated? On the, one, two, three, fifth? On the fifth?
Yeah, it's probably an error on my part.
Okay, I just didn't know if that meant that there were that many that were changed and maybe a few were.
This is an accurate reflection of them right there.
Thank you. That was a clarification question for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerical error, Mr. Hill.
I don't know how many times I looked at it and counted it, so. Still working on counting.
I think what he was trying to say, Ms. Mays, is it feels like sixty-six. Right?
I counted fourteen, so I haven't counted.
Very good. Are there other, other trustees that, that have any thing to discuss? No? Okay. So, what I recommend, now this will come back as action or discussion action at our next meeting, you all do have a copy of the, the policy updates in the notebooks that you've been provided. Should you have any questions, I would have you refer those to Dr. Kavasos to relay to the Governance Committee as they're going through the review over the next couple of weeks, so that we continue to move ahead efficiently. All right? Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to discussion item B, which is the bond update, twenty-fourteen bond update.
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening we'd like to share a bond update, twenty-fourteen bond update. As you know, our CBOC Committee has been meeting also as part of bond review and oversight, and so at this time, we'd like to give you an update as a board, and Ms. Powell will do that presentation.
Thank you. President Rice, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening again. We are before you this evening to give an, an update on our work under the twenty-fourteen bond program, and we all are aware that that is a six-hundred-and-sixty-three-million-dollar program, a five-year program, and we are in year five of our work. We are beginning to see the end of this one, and to date, we have fifty-million dollars of funds still available to us. Those will fund the final remaining projects. We bid all the campuses now, and we have only left to bid the auxiliary facilities. We can tell you yet again that we've updated our bond program estimates, and we are still comfortable that we will finish the entire program within budget, so that's, that's continuing to be good news for us. In terms of looking at all of our resources under the bond program, seventy-eight of those funds have been expended, another fourteen percent are already contracted, so it's a total of ninety-three, ninety-two and a half roughly percent, there's some rounding in there, so there's seven, seven percent of our funds left remaining, so. In the area of fine arts, we have spent to date seven-point-four million dollars of the total nine-point-eight million that was included in the bond program. There are purchase orders opened totaling two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars, and we still have two-point-two million dollars available. This was as of the end of March, and the Fine Arts Department will be buying their year five uniform, instruments primarily from those funds. There are actually a couple of bids on the agenda this evening for band and orchestra instruments, and some purchases from the bond program will be made from those bids. In terms of the work in the fine arts area, again, they are, the Fine Arts Department is focused on instrument and equipment purchases for year five of the bond program, and that's based on input from all of the directors. We also will be replacing this year drill team uniforms for Lamar and Segin. In terms of programming work that involves capital investments, we have professional development that will be underway for the fourth-grade cohort at Corey and Jones Academies. This year, we've accepted already ninety-five kindergarten students at Corey and at Jones for next year's kindergarten cohorts to enter our fine arts dual-language academies. Construction of the Fine Arts Center continues to take a lot of the time, a lot of the staff's input, we meet periodically to hold construction updates and address particular questions and planning aspects of that facility. And then finally, the Fine Arts Department has been working diligently with plant services staff and senior administration on programming for the junior high fine arts dual-language academy. This was an academy that we talked about in twenty-fourteen, ahead of the bond election, and as we talked about the elementary programs that were included in the twenty-fourteen bond program, we received numerous questions and inquiries about what would be next after that elementary program, and where would kids who attended the elementary academies go following their elementary experience. And we committed at that time that we would develop a, a junior high academy program as well, and so that work is well underway, and we would anticipate that the investment, the capital investment for that facility would be in a next bond program. In the area of technology, safety, and security, to date, we've spent a little less than seventy million of the eighty-two-point-six million that was included in the bond program here. We still have eleven-point-six million available. In terms of the infrastructure and the network services aspects and security aspects of the technology program, a lot of work has been done on the security camera installations. We now have all but two of our schools complete in terms of installing the security cameras and upgrading that equipment. Following those last two schools, we'll finish out work on administrative office buildings and annexed buildings. Also, PA system upgrades been completed just in this last quarter at five campuses. We have also installed hearing-impaired safety lights at the three schools, Miller, Young, and Martin, that, that host and house some of our hearing-impaired students. And then IP phone upgrades have been completed at two sites and are scheduled for four more in the next few months, and virtual desktop infrastructure for our data centers has been underway. Terms of classroom technology, we've completed all but one of our campuses, and that one campus is awaiting completion of some of the construction work and that is taking place there, and then we'll follow along behind with installation of classroom technology at that one school. So I think Mr. Branham anticipates being finished with that one by early summer. In the category of other bond projects, this is primarily digital signage, and that work is underway. We have, we, we created several, or identified several pilot schools for this work, and at each one, we are placing one large monitor in the building, and the principal has input on where that goes. That, that monitor is connected to a communication system that allows us to make broadcast announcements and what have you from that monitor, also helps us maintain a safe and secure environment. We have installed data drops at approximately three-fourths of the campuses for these monitors, and so now we'll begin phase- and so now we'll begin phasing in the implementation, the installation of all the monitors. We also expect to be finished with this work really by June, so this work is nearing completion. In terms of our transformation through innovation grants, we've awarded over five-point-two million dollars for a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-three grants since the beginning of this initiative, which actually began before the twenty-fourteen bond program, the last year of the previous bond program. This particular year, we've awarded seventy-five grants that total approximately a million dollars, and we have scheduled our T.I. grant showcase for October twenty-fourth. That is an event that in the past, we've held in the spring, and we've decided to move it to the fall so that the recipients have a full school year to complete their work with their grant proceeds and the equipment that was purchased through their grant. In terms of transportation, we have spent fourteen and a half million dollars of the total eighteen million dollars appropriated through the bond program. We have about one-point-six million left available. To date, we have purchased and received ninety-nine new buses, and that's a mix of propane and diesel buses. In terms of year five, we plan to purchase and have actually already ordered fifteen buses. Eight of those will be regular ed, and seven are special ed buses, and we expect delivery of those by August, so they'll be here in time for use with the new school year. We've also, in terms of our service fleet or white fleet vehicles, we purchased a hundred-and-twenty-five of those and received all but one of those. And for year five, we've ordered the twenty-five replacement vehicles that we had planned to order. With that order, once we receive those, that will complete also all of the purchases on the transportation portion of the bond program. On the facilities in that area, we have spent four-hundred-and-thirty-six million of the five-hundred-and-fifty-two million dollars that was included in the bond for facilities projects. We have a total of seventy-four active projects. This number is coming down now. Thirty of those are in construction, and thirty-eight of those are actually in the closeout phase. So, the work's been done, and we're at the point of doing final reconciliations and obtaining our warranties and as-built documents. And so, we are, we have over half of our projects in, active projects in that closeout stage at the moment. Our Phase One projects, we have several projects that are finished. The contracts are not yet closed out, but we are using those facilities you see listed on the left-hand side of the page. On Phase Two projects, we have two that are currently under construction, Arlington High and Wood. Arlington High's work will be finished early this summer. And then Wood Elementary, we are completing a library addition at that school, and we expect that that will be completed by the start of the school year. Everything else is either closed or it's in that closeout phase. We've got a couple of pictures here. This is the new entrance at Arlington High with the name very prominently displayed above the main entrance. And a picture of a playground, the fall zone in Kirby that was placed there for that equipment. And at Goodman, a classroom that is being renovated. This is a picture of the Wood Library. This is a very recent picture, I think just as of this week on that work. In terms of Phase Three, we have several projects that are currently under construction. Butler is about finished. We're wrapping that one up. And Wimbush as well, we will be wrapping that one up very shortly. Fine Arts Center will complete next summer. It will be open next fall. All the other projects are either closed or in the closeout phase. This is a recent picture of the Fine Arts and Athletics Complex site. On the, kind of the top portion of the screen is where the Fine Arts Center will sit, and closer to us is where the Athletics Complex will sit. So, that work is progressing. In Phase Four projects, all of these are actively under construction right now. This is several pictures here at Bowie High School. The auditorium, you can see where we're removing chairs and seats and replacing those. We have parking lot work on the right-hand side, and the bottom picture is a lab, I believe it's a technology lab that's being demoed. And let's see here. At Cookin', we are doing some extensive renovations to the facility. Jones Academy, this is actually an addition that's funded in part from local construction funds, where we have a ten-classroom addition and a new gym being built. At Lamar, we have work done in the gym. You can see new bleacher seating. And then on the right-hand side, work of the, on the stage in the auditorium, and we're replacing those seats as well. And then concrete work in the bottom right picture. And then this photograph is of our renovation work taking place at what was the old Venture School on West Arkansas Lane. This is our, will be our new early college high school, and that will open in August. They poured the parking lot, and you can see on the right-hand side the demo work that has taken place inside the building, and they're beginning to frame out the interior spaces. In Phase Five, we have still kind of a mix here as far as the different stages of work. The, on the far right-hand side, we have, you see the final campus work that is under construction now. All of the projects, all the schools are either finished or under construction now. We have some bidding that's about to take place even on administrative buildings, and then design work underway for some other of our support facilities. And then photographs here of some of the newer construction taking place. Some of this work has just gotten underway in the last few months at Barnett and Bailey Junior High. And then in terms of our hub reporting, as of the end of March, we have expended nineteen percent of the dollars that we have expended have been with hub vendors, and we have commitments totaling twenty-four percent on all the active contracts at the moment. Our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee met on April fourth at the Lamar MAC, and they toured the MAC. This is our second visit to one of our MACs. With this committee, individuals serve staggered two-year terms. And so, some of the people on this committee, a number of them, had not visited one of our MACs. So, we took a tour of the MAC, and Mr. White from the Athletics Department made a presentation about our athletics programming and how the investments from this bond program help further and enhance our athletics programming. And then that group will meet again next week to prepare a report for this board that we anticipate will be coming on May sixteenth. We're also working with a Capital Needs Steering Committee, as we've heard mention of already, I believe, this evening, to develop and identify our needs, prioritize needs for what we anticipate would be our next bond program. And so, we are entering the, we're in really the last third of the work with this committee. They have two meetings left, and then we'll report to the board in May. And so, in terms of the work that they've been doing, we've done a number of surveys. Most recently, we held four community dialogues in April, April ninth and tenth, and presented to attendees the options that we were considering in order to address our programming priorities and facility priorities, and sought their input through a survey. And we had approximately fifteen-hundred responses. The vast majority of those were online. There were actually, attendance was fairly low at each one of those. But again, in total, we had over fifteen-hundred people complete the surveys. We spent two days last week, or actually, it wound up being one day, with senior staff, and there was one of our co-chairs from the committee was with us. The other one was ill and wasn't able to attend that day. But we took the data from our surveys, and we began to further refine the list of our identified needs and to develop the recommendations that we'll present back to the Capital Needs Steering Committee when they next meet, which is on May fourteenth. They will meet May fourteenth to review those recommendations, give their input on them, and then they'll meet again one last time on May twenty-ninth, the RACUP meeting, and to begin discussing how to message this entire package to the public in terms of what our needs are, what our priorities are, and what we're trying to accomplish with the program. And then they'll report out to the board on June eleventh. So, with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Powell, for all of the information. It's hard to believe we're on this side of this bond, isn't it?
It is.
Many projects, and that's just amazing to even fathom. Are there trustees that have questions, comments? I don't see any. I have one question with regard to the hub consultant that we're using. Will they be giving a brief at any time, is it planned for the board and/or to the CBOC as well as far as their findings? I don't, I know it's happening. I just don't know at what stage we're at there.
We can arrange that. Where we are with that work right now, we're very much in a transitional stage. We are continuing to track the hub expenditures ourselves, and they are working with our staff to establish the reporting system that we'll be using going forward. We've had some bumps we've had to work through. It's mostly just a change in the type of data that we're asking contractors to report to us. So, our hub consultant has been meeting regularly with our Plant Services team, and we've had to work through a lot of very granular-type details, specific reports, and go back to contractors and get additional information. And I think that once we kind of make this full switch, that the reporting will become a much easier process. Right now, we're still trying to work through some of the learning, if you will, on the part of our architects and our general contractors and even their subcontractors on what we want reported to us and how to do that and when. So, that's been our focus right now. Going forward, we'll look at how we, at our hub policy in terms of how we score our proposals and look for hub participation and what kind of a policy we have around hub participation. We're not at that point yet. Right now, again, it's mostly trying to develop the reporting system, so we can certainly schedule a point at which they come before CBOC or this board, if we want to do that. I think that, you know, by starting now, we're going to be at a really good place for full implementation with the start of a next bond program that we hope would occur next year. So, like I said, it's very much a transitional stage at this point.
Sure. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Last call, trustees. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the update. And again, being on the backside of this is phenomenal, where you only have seventy-something facilities, projects going on at any one time instead of the ninety or a hundred. I say that in jest. Thank you for all of your work and scrutiny to the budget and work with, of course, Mr. Horn as well, with the CBOC committee, and always doing everything you can to make sure everything's on time, on budget, and appropriate for our students. Appreciate it. And I guess, don't go very far, right?
Do I?
Don't go very far.
No, no, I'll just hang out here.
Next up is the legislative update, and I know who's going to be giving that presentation. So, please, go right ahead.
Great. Well, thank you again. So, tonight, we are twenty-five days away from the end of this legislative session. They're eighty-two percent of the way through their work. The last day of the session, the regular session, is May twenty-seventh. And so, anything beyond that would have to be in a special session. We're all aware that we have, as a district, adopted a legislative agenda covering three broad areas, one being local authority and one being instructional programming, and then finally, one around funding and unfunded mandates. And our legislative agenda contains five broad areas. You see listed here, academic accountability, school safety and mental health, school finance, school choice, and pre-K. And I'm going to cover several bills, but in particular, we're going to spend the bulk of the time on the school finance legislation. So, in the academic accountability category, Chris Turner has filed two bills. They're similar. And both of them have to do with improving the transparency of data that's used to determine school district and campus accountability ratings. And so, House Bill three-zero-zero-seven is the one that really has the broadest impact to us. And that one would require Texas Education Agency to release to school districts the data that they receive from other sources that the TEA will use in determining accountability ratings. And this bill would require that that data be released ahead of the rating, so the school districts have an opportunity to review the data and validate it, if you will. House Bill thirty-eleven is similar, except it does have to do strictly with the Higher Ed Coordinating Board and would require them to release data that they receive and then pass to TEA for use in the accountability system. Both of those bills have passed the House and have been sent to the Senate. House Bill thirty-eleven, which is the one that has to do with the Higher Ed Coordinating Board, was referred to the Senate Higher Ed Committee for hearing. And then House Bill three-zero-zero-seven has been referred to the Senate Ed Committee for consideration. As of last night, neither of those bills have been scheduled for a hearing. We had one bit of really good news, and that is Senate Bill two-thirteen has passed both chambers and is now on its way to the governor's desk for signature. This particular bill would extend for four more years provisions that exist for identifying students, qualifying students for graduation through individual graduation committees. And this would assist students who have not passed one or two parts of the STAR exam but are otherwise, have completed coursework and are otherwise eligible for graduation. So, through the work of an individual graduation committee and consideration of a committee of that student's work, a student can be identified for graduation. So, that was good news. Actually, this is one that school districts, including us, have been asking for and have been asking that these provisions be made permanent. So, while they haven't been made permanent, they have been extended for another four years. So, we'll keep working that down the road, future legislators. In the area of school safety and mental health, Senate Bill eleven is in, working its way through the process at the moment. This does a number of things, largely related to training of staff, and it does require the commissioner to adopt or amend facility standards, looking for best practices to enhance physical security of buildings. It would require training on the effects of grief and trauma on students, on student learning, and call for updates to emergency operations plans, and calls for set procedures for bombs or terroristic threats. It would also require that school districts provide instruction in digital citizenship and that that become part of district curriculum, and would require the School Health Advisory Council or the SHAC to include suicide prevention in the recommendations that they provide to school boards periodically. So, this particular bill passed the Senate, and it's scheduled for a hearing in the House Public Ed Committee this upcoming Tuesday. And in terms of school finance and tax relief, this And in terms of school finance and tax relief, this is where the legislature is really focusing all of their energies at the moment. And so I, I thought I'd try to, to briefly explain the two different school finance plans that are being considered right now and the potential impact that, that they could have for Arlington ISD and the vast difference between the two. So both the House and the Senate have included nine billion dollars of new money in their budgets for public ed. But they propose to spend that money very differently. They have different priorities. On the House side, if you, based on the provisions of that bill, the outcome for Arlington ISD would be an estimated thirty-two million dollars of new funding, okay? On the Senate side, based on the provisions of that bill, the AISD would stand to gain six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. So obviously vastly different. And so if you dig down and say, well, what's so different about the two? You can pretty much boil it down to, on the Senate side, they have taken the approach of prioritizing property tax relief, more so than the House, and in giving a larger raise that's mandated for teachers. The Senate bill includes a five-thousand-dollar flat amount raise for all teachers and all librarians, but no funding for raises for any other school district employees. On the House side, that thirty-two million dollars includes some money that we would be required to use for raises. Today, the definitions and, and the specifics around how that amount is calculated has not been defined yet, and we anticipate that that is something that if, if this bill passes, it would be defined within a conference committee at the moment. So the thirty-two million dollars does include money for raises for everyone except administrators. And administrator has yet to be defined in, in the bill. The amount of the raise is anticipated to be significantly less per person than the raise that is mandated in the Senate bill. The House raises are more discretionary. The way the bill reads right now, districts would have to use twenty-five percent of the gain in the basic allotment that's included in the bill for raises. And of that twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent of it has to be uniform, meaning roughly a, a uniform percentage raise across all employees except administrators. The other twenty-five percent of the twenty-five percent can be used at the district's discretion, but it has to be used for raises. The, both bills eliminate what's called the Cost of Education Index, which is a factor that had been assigned to school districts many years ago that's supposed to recognize differences in cost, so that if the cost of, of living and employing staff is higher in one district than another, this factor was supposed to recognize that. Over the years, the, the legislature's never found a good way to update that number, and it's something that they just ultimately said, if we can't determine how to update it periodically, then it's probably not something we want to keep. So they eliminated it, took those dollars and put them elsewhere in the funding formulas. Both of the bills have funding in them supposedly for pre-K. And I say that because when you look at the, the Senate bill in total and you see that gain that's, that's listed there for us, six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars, we certainly could not implement full-day pre-K if the only new money that we were getting net of the raises was six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars. So that's something that, that's very concerning and we've been looking at. Both bills, though, would give us money for kids who are in kindergarten through third grade who are either economically disadvantaged or English language learners, or both. And then those funds can be spent across students in grades pre-K through three. And it's those funds that are anticipated to be enough to pay for a full-day pre-K program. So again, the way they go at it in both, both bills is similar, but at the end of the day, once everything's netted out, there really is not enough money coming to us through the Senate version to actually implement full-day pre-K. One of the big differences here is how the, the two district, or the two versions utilize property values in the state funding formulas. We all know that, that the more property wealth a district has, the less state aid we get. The way they calculate that every year is they take, at, at this point, is they take last year's property values and they multiply it times a one-dollar tax rate, and that determines our local share. That's the amount of the total state funding calculation that we, as a local district, are expected to provide ourselves. So the House version continues to use last year's property values for that calculation. On the Senate side, their bill would require all school districts to move to using current year values. And for the vast majority of districts, that actually means that we have to come up with more of that local share than we do by using prior year values. And just because year-over-year, property values tend to go up, and so that, that local share calculation will be much higher for us, especially in that first year that you make that jump. And so that, that again is a big reason why the Senate version yields such a lesser net gain for all school districts, including us. So the, again, the primary differences, the Senate side, is that five-thousand-dollar teacher raise eats up most of the new money, along with property tax relief. And we'll go into some of the tax relief in a couple of slides. But the Senate Ed was, has heard that bill. They passed it out of committee. They were supposed to vote on it tomorrow, actually, in the full Senate. And we've just received word this evening that they pushed that off now until Monday. And so I, I think there's a lot of recognition that there are still a lot of questions to be answered. I, I attended a meeting yesterday in Austin with a number of other school districts, large school districts, and their concerns were the same as ours in terms of looking at that Senate bill and, and, and the net gain that they have from that version of the bill compared to what we were all expecting to receive under the House version of the bill. And so I think there are still a number of things that need to be worked out. So the Senate Chair of the Senate Ed Committee has asked that that bill be postponed to early next week so they can work through that. So this, this slide just shows a summary of where we are, except we'll have an update to that third box down there now. The House passed their version of the bill, the, the school finance bill, passed it over to the Senate. Senate Ed heard it. They substituted their provisions for school finance into that bill. They passed it out of committee. And again, they were supposed to vote on it tomorrow, but we've seen word just this evening that that's been pushed off to early next week. And ultimately, everyone expects that this, the Senate will pass their version of the bill. And so then it will go back to the House, and the House would have to agree to their changes in order for it to move forward and, and take effect. They will not do that, though. And so we'll have two versions of school finance. We'll have the House version and Senate, and it will wind up in a conference committee where the conferees will work that out. With a conference committee, there are ten conference committee members, five from the House and five from the Senate. And they do not meet in open meeting. It will be a very private meetings in which they work through these things. And so then when, they cannot make changes, they cannot introduce something new to the process. All they can do is work from what is already in, in one or the other of the bills and, and then negotiate to a, a final package that comes back out for both parties or both chambers to, to vote on. And so that'll be an interesting process. I will back up and say that, you know, the move, let's talk about the, on the Senate bill. The move to prior, or to current year property values was necessary because their version of the plan actually costs more than the nine billion dollars that they originally appropriated for school finance. And so by moving to those current year values, that frees up some more money that the state can use to fund this. So in, when we look towards the conference committee, they, backing off of those current year values is not something that we can do or that they can do under the Senate plan and still have the rest of their plan work. They, they don't have the money there to do it without moving to current year property values. So that's going to be a real sticking point for the conference committee. And, and so we'll, we'll just, we'll have to wait and see how that, that plays out. This chart tries to, to demonstrate how the two different bills will change our tax rates. What you see in the bar on the far left shows the breakdown of, of our current tax rates structure within, for public education. We can go up to a dollar seventeen. All school districts have to tax, or most school districts have to tax at a dollar for the tier-one portion of their state aid. And above a dollar, there are six more pennies of tax that are referred to as golden pennies that are, are equalized at a higher dollar threshold through the funding formulas. And then above that, another eleven pennies that are referred to always as copper pennies because they're equalized at yet a different level. But a school district could potentially have a tax rate about to a dollar seventeen. Arlington ISD, as you can see on that second bar, we currently, we tax at a dollar four. So a dollar of that is that tier-one piece of the tax rate for us. The next four cents of our tax rate qualifies these, these golden pennies that, that yield us a higher amount per student than, than our taxes themselves can generate, or our values themselves can generate. Under these two plans, we would, districts would still be able to tax up to a dollar seventeen. That's, a dollar seventeen is still the, the cap, max cap that's allowed, yet the bills both require districts to lower their tax rate. And they don't do it just off of the total, they do it by these different pieces. And so under the House plan, school districts would have to lower that, that tier-one tax rate by four cents, so from a dollar to ninety-six cents. On the Senate side, school districts would have to lower that tier-one piece down by eight cents. So that's a vast difference. That's where you can see that the Senate is trying to give more property tax relief than the House version of the bill. And then there are also the, some differences on those pennies above the, the tier-one category. So where today, we have access to six pennies of those golden pennies, and the House version would give districts two more of those golden pennies, they'd shift to, from the copper pennies down to these golden pennies. That just has, that just changes the dollar threshold at which we're equalized on, on the tax rates in that category. And then the, the Senate version, though, doesn't change the, the number of golden pennies you have access to. It does increase the number of copper pennies, but the total for, under both versions is still a dollar seventeen. The golden pennies, what's, what's a very positive thing about those is there's no recapture on those pennies. So school districts that have already had TREs and even school districts even without a TRE, if you're taxing anything above a dollar right now, your first six pennies are, are not subject to recapture. The pennies above that are. And so the changes that both these bills make are also attempting to lower recapture for school districts. So several other points about this, the first item here has, just explains the change in the way those copper pennies are compressed. School districts have to lower their tier-one portion of their tax rate. We just saw that, either to ninety-six cents on the House side or ninety-two cents on the, the Senate side. If you are taxing above a dollar six right now, you're in those copper pennies, you have to compress those pennies as well. And it's by a similar amount, but they're a little bit different. Another thing that the Senate version of this, the school finance plan would do is raise the homestead exemption. Again, that's another way that they are trying to give more tax relief to property owners. So they would increase that homestead exemption by another fifteen thousand dollars up to, to forty thousand dollars. So that was year one. The second year, if this, whichever bill that passes, there are some other things that, that may happen with the tax rate. On the House side, there's no further compression on the tier-one portion of the rate or those golden pennies. But for the pennies above a dollar eight, if you're taxing there and if they pump more, they, the legislature put more money into the basic allotment, you'll have to lower your rate even further. On the Senate side, if, if, if they, they're proposing a tax, a sales tax swap where, and that would involve a constitutional amendment, and if it passes, then the sales tax rate would go up by one percent, and the state would use that money to further lower the property tax rate for school districts. And so there would be another eight-cent reduction on top of the seven cents from, I'm sorry, another seven-cent reduction on top of the eight cents from year one. If that election were to not pass, then the tax rate would go back to a dollar. The, the tier-one tax rate on the Senate side would go back to a dollar. So it's real complicated and it's very dependent on that, that sales tax increase passing in year two. In year three, then, the only thing that would, further change that would occur to tax rates on the House side would be if the legislature puts more money into the basic allotment, there will have to be some further lowering of the portion of your rate that is called, for those copper pennies. On the Senate side, though, this is where, now then we've moved from actually just lowering your tax rate to there being a cap on the tax rate. And this is a, kind of an, an odd thing where they would take the dollars that would be generated off of property value growth above two and a half percent and use those dollars to lower your tax rate. And it's on a graduated scale that would be tied to the rate of inflation. And so there's still a lot of uncertainty about how that would even work. And then for the copper pennies, again, anything above today's rate of a dollar six up to a dollar seventeen, then there would be further compression or further reduction of those pennies if the legislature puts more money into the basic allotment. So there, there's a lot of complexity around this and a lot that still hasn't, has been, has yet to be fleshed out. And so, you know, we, we're just going to have to wait and see how, how, what comes out of conference committee. They really can't blend a portion of the, these, these different reductions, in my opinion. I think it's going to have to be, they're either going to adopt the, the House version of tax compression or the Senate version. The TREs, there's, there's also still a little bit of debate about this. Right now, on the House side, the, the way the bill is written, if you have a, if your rollback rate was, is greater than a dollar four, then you could not have a TRE in this next year. Our rollback rate would be a dollar for this year. So our understanding is that under that plan, Arlington ISD could have a TRE next year. On the Senate side, the way the bill's written, nobody can have a TRE unless it was in your strategic plan that you had adopted as of January one of 2019. So unless you had the foresight to put that in a strategic plan a year ago, you cannot have a TRE at all next year. And then there's actually, the Senate version puts some additional items into their bill that really are not tied to school finance, such as the school start date. They have a provision here that says that school cannot start earlier than the third Monday in August. They also have several provisions relating to assessments in, here, including one that, one provision that says by the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, all the assessments would be online and they would be done in smaller chunks over a period of time throughout the year instead of concentrated, you know, as they are now, in longer tests that occur in the spring. So this became even something more on the Senate side, more than just school finance. It was comprehensive school reform. So moving out of that and talking about TRS Active Care, you know, we discussed, obviously, that this district has had a priority to, to seek better opportunities for, for insurance, health insurance for our employees. And so we've worked with, Matt Kraus filed a bill on our behalf. It was co-signed by all five of our representatives, and it would authorize- and it would authorize us to operate a pilot program for healthcare outside of the TRS system. Um, we've, uh, participated in April fourth, uh, that bill was heard in the House Public Ed Committee. Uh, several people from our district testified there and the committee chair asked or directed that, uh, we work directly with TRS staff on this uh, to determine, uh, what, uh, what pathway we might have, uh, uh, to address, uh, our ask, maybe with, uh, without necessarily, uh, uh, exiting AISD from the system. So we've met, uh, with TRS officials on April eighteenth. Uh, TRS agreed to partner with us on a plan, uh, a plan design that would be separate and distinct from existing plan designs. Uh, and then they would help us seek, uh, pricing on that, uh, from the marketplace. We have sent a letter, uh, outlining what we have identified as the framework for that partnership uh, and who would be responsible for what. Um, and we are awaiting their response back. Terms of TRS itself, the retiree plan, um, there have been a couple of bills, uh, working their way through, uh, the process that, uh, would increase, uh, contributions to TRS to help, uh, uh, ensure the financial sta- uh, stability of that system. And, uh, to date, Senate Bill twelve, uh, would increase the contributions to TRS. Um, and it would require more, a higher rate of contribution from both the state and school districts and actually from employees. The House has a different version that, uh, would just require the state, uh, to increase its contributions over the next five years. And so both of those bills have passed their respective chambers and, uh, so a conference committee will negotiate, uh, the terms on that. So, um, the next week or so are going to be real critical on school finance. And, um, I think everybody fully expected that at the end of the day, we'd be with the conference committee, working out details on school finance plan. These bills have taken, ha- have become even more different than I think a lot of us anticipated when the session first began. And so until we get, uh, really to the, the very end of the session, we will not have a, a good sense as to what, um, the revenue impact will be for us. And certainly you saw that, uh, those differences are quite stark. And, uh, we'll have, uh, depending on, on how, what that, what outcome we wind up with, will have a dramatic impact on, um, or, um, influence on our decisions that we make in terms of budget, uh, and potentially a TRE moving forward. Uh, but that'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much for all of the information, Ms. Powell. I, uh, I, I look at this whole session, uh, kind of like setting up your fantasy football or Final Four brackets. And those that went with the conservative, oh, it's never going to happen or unfortunately, they're winning right now. Um, I don't know, don't know what's going to happen. Time's running out and it all depends on those, those conference committee members. Uh, and perhaps what, uh, what persuasion they can have from us individually and from us, uh, through our legislative consultants to see if we can't move these, uh, positions. Sad situation. Thank you for all the analysis too, uh, complex analysis. You have nothing else to do in your day, obviously, than to go through all of this. Uh, I, I don't see how you do everything you do to take the time, um, to go through such a thorough analysis on the, on the, the copper pennies, the golden pennies. I really do appreciate the time and the breakdown between the two bills and, and full well knowing that you're taking all this time because they all blow up anyway. Just to know that is the outcome. I appreciate everything that you've done for it.
Thank you.
Uh, we do have, uh, one at this point, uh, Mrs. Mays, please.
Thank you, President Reich. Um, Mrs. Powell, I would give you a penny for your thoughts, but I don't even know how much that would cost me right now.
[laughing]
I know. But I do want to say, um, also as President Reich was mention- mentioning, thank you very much for breaking down this opportunity. I know that this current board for this legislation session, as in the past, but particularly this one, has been very engaged in wanting to know what's going on. And I know that we all try our best to keep up, but really appreciate you being there to explain the best you can, to break down, um, so that we understand. Um, I have spoken to, um, some other colleagues in other districts and their understanding isn't even half as much as we know based on the information that you're giving us. So I just really want to stop and say thank you because this is very critical. And I know that we all still need to continue to do our due diligence as you are to, uh, you know, keep hope alive, keep mentioning, keep saying the same things that we've been saying to our legislators and still, um, ask people in the community to do the same thing, you know, un- until the very end. Um, but I just wanted to say, uh, thank you. Really do appreciate the, the information that you continue to give us so that we know exactly what's going on, even as fluid as that information is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Reich. I also wanted to say thank you, Ms. Powell, for all the work that you've been doing because we've been on those legislative calls with you every week and you're always well informed and you know when the committee hearings are happening and what's going up and what's going down. And, and it really helps our understanding of that. Um, I also wanted to add to Ms. Mays' comment about the community members that we've been in contact with or have been reaching out to us, asking what's going on. And so I think something that's clear from your, your, uh, presentation that I want to just sort of underscore is that I'm hearing from a lot of people that, oh, HB three, it's HB three, and, and their understanding of HB three is HB three as it came out of the House. Or people are coming and saying, well, it sounds like the legislature is going to actually fix this because both sides are wanting to put nine billion dollars into education. And as your presentation showed, for Arlington ISD, the differences between those two approaches, even though it's nine billion dollars overall, um, is very different. And, and we're in the position of having to put together a budget in June. And those two options, as they currently stand, are going to, you know, could dramatically change how we approach, um, the budgetary process and programming going forward. So I would say to anybody watching this, anybody who's paying close attention to this in the community, um, you know, the next couple of weeks are critical, like you said, and to pay attention to which things are happening and how it impacts Arlington ISD because it's not just as simple as the number on the bill. And it's no longer just as simple as there's going to be nine billion dollars more going into education, um, into education because the results for us can be, um, dramatically different. So we started this session saying that we were cautiously optimistic and for a while, uh, as President Reich said, um, some of us were getting, you know, a little bit too optimistic. And I think now in some, in some sense, we've been brought back down to earth. So, um, let's watch and wait.
Well said, Mr. Chapa. Thank you. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Reich. I also want to tell you, thank you so much, Cindy, for you and all your staff, uh, who have, I'm sure have been picking up a little extra, uh, work because you have been so focused on this and that has really benefited our district so much. So thanks to everybody, uh, in your organization for, for all that you do and the letter writing and keeping up with all of this. Um, would it be too much to ask at this point, um, to, um, I, I'm, I'm curious about this constitutional amendment to, and to increase the tax rate and how that will help or hurt us? I, I can't, I can't quite get my head around it. Could you help me with that?
Yeah, so the, uh, constitutional amendment would be, uh, uh, to increase the sales tax rate.
Right.
And if that is approved, then the state would use the money from that higher sales tax across the state, uh, to put more money into the funding formulas and require districts to lower their local property tax rates, uh, is how that would work. So it's, uh, it's how they would, uh, generate additional money to buy down property tax rates across the state. Uh, sales tax rates, uh, sales tax is generally considered a, a more, uh, repressive tax, uh, regressive tax. Uh, and so, um, I, I think there will be a lot of resistance to that. Um, I, I think, uh, I, I, you know, that will be an interesting public discussion, I think, if it reaches that point where, uh, voters are asked to make that choice, so. Uh, yeah, that, that was my thought, but I wanted to be sure I wasn't missing something. Thank you very much.
That's a good clarification, Ms. Walton. Yeah, the, I, if I were to look in a crystal ball, my prediction would be that there's no way that that would ever pass. Uh, it's just not going to happen. Uh, so we, we shall see. I, I have one question on the, uh, uh, TRS care and, and our communications and potential collaboration, uh, with TRS. Um, are they, uh, and I guess maybe I shouldn't put you on the spot to answer this, but I was just curious, uh, yeah, a general pulse of sincerity on their part versus placating to get down the road in the session enough to make it all disappear?
We, I think, were optimistic when we met with them. Uh, there seemed to be, uh, genuine interest, uh, initially in, um, uh, working with us on something. I honestly think that, um, it's not just us. There are other districts who are, who have been saying, we want out of TRS active care. And because the law prohibits that, um, they were starting to work with their own legislators. And I think, uh, this, uh, pressure was building. So I think, uh, they were looking for an opportunity to design something, uh, that, uh, would allow them to pilot and still have, uh, ha- um, have some control or some participation in the process. And so they looked at us since we, I think, were further along than anybody else, um, in this, this, uh, uh, effort, uh, as, as being potentially a partner in a way that they could do that. Um, we have said that, uh, we're, we're quite anxious to, uh, hear back from them soon. Uh, we'll press the issue honestly as of tomorrow because of the impending deadlines, uh, really even starting Monday, uh, on getting bills, uh, pushed out of committee. Uh, so, uh, that's real important to us in, in terms of your question about, um, you know, are they just trying to kick this on down the line? That's something we're trying to watch for and, uh, and try to avoid. But, uh, um, you know, I, I guess, uh, I can't answer that question for sure until we see their response.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that. Uh, hopeful that something positive happens there and it doesn't make all of the time and, and effort and energy that's gone into this, uh, this entire session be for naught, uh, just for a full dead stop until the next session to bring up the conversation again. The only other question that I have is, I think, is it, uh, Senator Taylor's bill on the, the school safety? Uh, so one of the items that you delineated there was giving the, uh, commissioner more, uh, authority to, um, adjust or add facilities, uh, uh, criteria for safety, hardening of schools, I assume, something like that. So is there any, any thoughts at this point, how that may look for us? Where we have just gone through a six hundred and sixty-three million dollar bond package and we have done so much in safety and security that, uh, what, what would that process look like as far as us being able to interact with the commissioner and the TEA, uh, to advocate what we have already done and invested versus having something that is, in our opinion, potentially missing the mark or not, not necessarily, uh, appropriate for our district, uh, especially relative to the investment that we've already made?
Yeah. So my own opinion is that, uh, what, what that actually means is that, uh, standards for new construction is what they're looking at, not necessarily requiring districts to go back and retrofit something. Um, TEA has facility standards, uh, that we follow, classroom sizes and, um, and, uh, uh, support space sizes and what have you for different, uh, grade spans. And so, um, my impression has been, from what I've read, that, um, that these standards, uh, would be incorporated, uh, into that, uh, for security. And they're looking more at best practices. So I don't anticipate that, uh, that, that they're talking about, uh, uh, requiring schools to retrofit, uh, facilities. Um, uh, we asked the question last week on our call with our legislative consultant about, um, where has school, uh, safety and security been? Because at the start of the session, that was identified as one of the priorities. And, um, the response that we got from our legislative consultant is that, uh, most of the dollars have been sucked up into the school finance and the property tax, uh, relief effort. And so, uh, you see, you know, in this bill largely, um, it's, it's a lot of training primarily. And there's no funding being allocated, uh, for schools to, uh, implement new infrastructure or programming around safety and security and mental health.
Right, right. Yeah, that's kind of what I read in between the lines, there are unfunded mandates and not necessarily a full, uh, opportunity for us to interact, to try to make it right and, and with what, as the governor said, was a top priority for our state. So, very good. I don't see any other lights indicating further questions or discussions. So thank you, appreciate it very much. So we will move on. Uh, the next item is open forum for non-agenda items. I do not have any cards, so we can move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Reich. A couple of items that, uh, to report on since we've, it's been only a week since we've met, but, uh, there's still a lot going on. So, uh, first, our PACE department did a fantastic job at the Father Fest last weekend, uh, continuing their focus on dad's outreach. The event evolved over the past years and this one was held at the MAC, uh, at Bowie High School. And it was the biggest turnout they've had since they've done the dad's outreach. So thank you again to Aaron Pedales and his staff, uh, for this engaging activity. On Tuesday, our inaugural Arlington Co- College and Career High School class met for a welcome and celebration at TCC Southeast Campus. So these, this is the first class, uh, the class of twenty twenty-three that will be beginning at, uh, the College and Career High School. Uh, the event was a chance for Dr. Boland, the principal, to address the parents and the kids, uh, about their opportunities that they will, uh, be facing. And they were really excited, a little nervous, just like the first cohort was, uh, four years ago. Uh, but I think by the end, we're much more, uh, sure that they had made the right decision. Wednesday at Zegin High School, the school celebrated its senior class with a senior walk for National College Signing Day. This is the first time they've done this at Zegin High School. Uh, and, uh, the students were wearing their caps and gowns and they were walking, uh, throughout the hallways in a celebratory, uh, manner. And, uh, were encouraged to obviously, uh, be proud of the fact that they are graduating from high school and continuing on with their, uh, college and career. And finally, today, our avid students received their graduation cords during an avid senior celebration. It was held at Sam Houston High School. More than four hundred and twenty-five students from all our six traditional high schools will graduate with avid cords. And combined, they've earned more than nineteen million dollars in scholarships. This is the most that avid has had in terms of seniors and the most that they've gotten in scholarships. It was truly, uh, an accomplishment. It was really, really nice to see, uh, the students receive their cords from their principal, their counselors, their avid teachers. Uh, this is an outstanding program and, uh, much, much, much to be proud of. So that concludes my report.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Any trustees have, have reports? All right, seeing none. Uh, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, President Reich.
Very good. The time is ten twenty-seven. We will not be going into a closed session. This meeting is adjourned.